So I'd like to start off, we acknowledge that the land upon, we acknowledge the land on which we gather is the traditional on seeded territory of the Enigma First Nation called Order. And I would like to start off by, I would like to recognize that September is pulmonary fibrosis month and help to raise awareness about critical health issues that affect our community. And pulmonary fibrosis is no exception. Pulmonary fibrosis is a relentless and often misunderstood lung disease that affects thousands of people across the globe, including some of our own neighbors. It is a condition that gradually scurs the lung tissue, making it increasingly difficult for individuals to breathe and carry out everyday activities. During this month, I urge you to take a moment to learn more about pulmonary fibrosis, its symptoms, and risk factors. Early diagnosis and treatment can make a significant difference in the lives of those affected. Let us support our friends, family, family members, and neighbors who are living with this condition by providing empathy and understanding. In addition, I encourage everyone to participate in local events and initiatives aimed at raising funds for research and support for pulmonary fibrosis patients. Together, we can make a difference in their, in the lives of those battling this disease and contribute to finding a cure. And for more information, you can visit the website for the Canadian Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation by going to CPF.CA.
Okay, declarations of conflict of interest.
Okay.
So approve of the agenda, CAO Eleanor, did you want to add something to the agenda under the closed session? Or did you want me to read it aloud here? Okay, so today our, our CAO passed on a, an amendment to our agenda. It's a human resource matter. In order to move into a closed session, to bring up the request to add the item during the approval of agenda for council's consideration, I refer to section 119 subsection 1D as per municipal government act. D is human resources matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations. So that will fall at the end of our meeting. Moved. Can you, yeah. Okay.
I just wanna, I just wanna ask, there's, there's nothing on the agenda for a closed session.
No, that's why I'm adding it.
Okay, so you're adding a closed session item, okay?
Yes, and it's, it's, it's an addition because it's a relation, labor relations matter that needs some response.
So I'd like to start off, we acknowledge that the land upon, we acknowledge the land on which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Enigma First Nation called Order. And I would like to start off by, I would like to recognize that September is pulmonary fibrosis month and help to raise awareness about critical health issues that affect our community. And pulmonary fibrosis is no exception. Pulmonary fibrosis is a relentless and often misunderstood lung disease that affects thousands of people across the globe, including some of our own neighbors. It is a condition that gradually scures the lung tissue, making it increasingly difficult for individuals to breathe and carry out everyday activities. During this month, I urge you to take a moment to learn more about pulmonary fibrosis, its symptoms, and risk factors. Early diagnosis and treatment can make a significant difference in the lives of those affected. Let us support our friends, family, family members, and neighbors who are living with this condition by providing empathy and understanding. In addition, I encourage everyone to participate in local events and initiatives aimed at raising funds for research and support for pulmonary fibrosis patients. Together, we can make a difference in their, in the lives of those battling this disease and contribute to finding a cure. And for more information, you can visit the website for the Canadian Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation by going to CPF.ca. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest. Okay, so approve of the agenda. CAO Eleanor, did you want to add something to the agenda under the closed session? Or did you want me to read it aloud here? Okay, so today, our CAO passed on an amendment to our agenda. It's a human resource matter. In order to move into a closed session, to bring up the request to add the item during the approval of agenda for council's consideration, I refer to Section 119, subsection 1D as per Municipal Government Act. D is human resources matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations. So that will fall at the end of our meeting. Moved. Can you, yeah, okay.
I just want to ask, there's, there's nothing on the agenda for a closed session?
No, that's why I'm adding it.
Okay, so you're adding a closed session item?
Yes, and it's, 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 it's an addition because it's a labor relations matter that needs some response sooner than later, and that's why I'm adding it tonight.
No problem.
And there'll be more information in the closed session. So I need someone to approve the agenda. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Twill?
I'd like to bring, bring up a topic under new business.
Okay, so what do you want to bring up?
Outreach Center.
I don't know if that will fall under that, because that should be coming from a report, and that report would fall under CAO Eleanor, what committee?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it depends on what, what the topic is regarding the Outreach Center as to which committee it would go to.
Yeah. What's the issue in the Outreach Center?
I want to talk about the state of the Outreach Center and the impact and effect that it has in the community.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I want to bring up under new business.
I still want to get it under clarification from legal or from our CAO? Is there a report to go with it, CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship. So there's, there's no report to it, which means there can be no motion attached with it. It could be added under new business, but it would be, have to be addressed in more detail in a future council agenda.
And I believe under the report from the Standing Committee for Protection Services, Protection and Emergency Services, there will be an update or questions asked about last Tuesday's meeting, was it last Tuesday's meeting, at Richard Junior High, which also brought up the issue of the Community Outreach Center, which is owned by the province and operated by the province. So Counselor Twill, that's where you can get it. Okay, I need a vote to call the agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. All against? Okay, carry it. Okay, so I will move on to adoption of previous draft minutes. There are two: regular meeting August 14th, 2023, and special meeting August 28th. Can I just get a clarification on that? I, I thought we had two regular monthly meetings, second Monday and the fourth Monday of each month. So that meeting on the 28th is not a special meeting. That's a second, a second regular meeting, monthly meeting, is it not? Go, go ahead, Counselor Bernard.
Yeah, Your Worship, I always thought that the second meeting was for any emergencies or any residents come up that couldn't wait for the regular meeting, or if, or if there was committees wanting to come in and make a presentation.
Counselor McCabe?
You look at the report today, September 11th, I mean, our resolutions from my committee were dealt with August 28th. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay.
So it's usually for extenuating circumstances or presentations. That's why we had the extra date set.
Counselor McCabe?
I, I concur with what Counselor Bernard is saying. I don't think we necessarily have to meet every fourth Monday. That's when we need to. It seems that we have been, but I thought that was going to be our assigned time if we needed to, but we don't necessarily need to.
Yes, but, but, but we can call special meetings in between, right?
That's your special meeting.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Okay, any errors, omissions, additions? Need someone to move the two draft minutes? Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Matar. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Business arising, air to the minutes. This is my favorite part. No? Okay. Reports of standing committees of council, planning and heritage, Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, Ward 1.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, everybody. The Planning and Heritage Committee has been rescheduled for September 25th, so we've not met since our last meeting of council. Therefore, I have no minutes or anything attached or any resolutions for your, for your review. The planning board has not met since the council meeting either, therefore there's no minutes there as well attached. But I will note that Planning Board will be meeting this Wednesday for a special meeting of planning to, to hear two applications, one from the Department of Health and one from the Department of Housing. So that will be here in the chambers, and that is open to the public to come along. And if anyone chooses to address the Planning Board, it is recommended if they could give a call to the planning staff at 902-629-4158, or alternatively, you can email planning@charlottetown.ca. And the Design Review Board has not met since, since our last meeting. Therefore, I have no reports to attach. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has not met. However, we did meet last week, but not enough time for us to bring the minutes and information to this package, so you'll see those next month. We do have a couple of second readings, and other than that, I only have one other thing I'd like to do, is I'd like to welcome our new manager of development planning, David Gundrum, who is, today is his very first day, so welcome to the city. Okay, yeah, yeah. And other than that, I have nothing else, but I will do my best to answer any questions that you might have.
I think Counselor Twill said good luck to him. Good luck, David. Counselor Twill?
Thank you for your report, Counselor Alana. Just a couple of questions. As you indicated, there's a meeting Wednesday with respect to Planning Board entertaining. The application from the province, I think there's two requests, two variances. One is regarding the proposed injection site. A lot of interest in that particular topic, as you know, you know that firsthand. The question I have is, did the provincial government submit an environmental assessment prior to the package being put together and sent out to members of the Planning Board? I recall watching, I think it was on CBC one evening, would have been several weeks ago or two months ago, and they went on a great length after conducting an environmental review down on that particular site, and I believe that's part and parcel to the application that's, that's going to be entertained by your Planning Board. Just wondering if, if, if the city of Charlottetown is in receipt of the, the report, the environmental report, and, and what actually does the assessment say? That's my first question, please.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, Your Worship, and to, to Counselor Twill. I have not yet seen the two applications from the province, one from Department of Health and one from Department of Housing. Those are still with our staff. My first glimpse at that report will be at our meeting on Wednesday. As for whether or not an environmental impact study has been completed, I don't believe it's required for a temporary variance. It would be required if it was going to be a change of use and rezoning the property from one thing to another. But I will defer to our planning manager to update the, the rest of that question. So if our planning manager, probably be Donna, since it's David's first day, yeah, whoever might like to take that answer.
Can you just come to the mic? If you want to sit next to her, David, you can too.
Through you, Your Worship, to Counselor Twill. No, we have, we are not in receipt of the environmental impact assessment. As the deputy mayor stated, that is not required at the moment, and so it's not a requirement for them to submit at this point.
Counselor Twill, you want to follow up with second question?
Second question?
Yep, turn on your mic.
So, so it's not a prerequisite with respect to, you know, when, when council looks at the entire application for the provincial government to submit that, that environmental impact and effect in terms of an assessment and evaluation. So, okay, so I received a phone call. A resident wanted to know where the province was at with that environmental, that environmental work order. Again, you know, there was interviews done a number of weeks ago, and I think CBC carried the story, to their credit. So, anyway, so it's not, it does, it's not a requirement or prerequisite to be part of the package. Good. My second question is, I've, I've sent emails in to City Hall. I've raised it here on a number, number of occasions with the distribution of drug paraphernalia on the, on the Outreach Center site on, on their property. I brought this up on a number of occasions, and usually there's, there are protocols and prerequisites and procedures and policies that must be followed. So my question is, did, did the NGO that's supplying drug paraphernalia on that site and also circulating through the streets of the city of Charlottetown, did they receive a permit? Did they receive a license? Did they receive, have they got insurance? Do they have the mandate? Was there public consultation? Where, where's the checklist of, of requirements that one must adhere to when distributing drug paraphernalia? And I don't believe, and somebody in this chamber, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe for one minute that was the original mandate of the Outreach Center. Nobody in the community knows what the mandate is now, but nonetheless, that seems to be a regular occurrence and happening on, on, on a, you know, daily basis.
Okay.
And the residents and the residents want to know the following questions that, that I've raised.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through Your Worship to Counselor Twill. The council has never heard, heard any applications through planning or through city council itself in regards to the Outreach Center. We've not had any requests for any permits through council. Whether or not there's ever been a permit through operational, through a staffing, whether there was a renovation done, that's, that will be a question we'll direct to the manager in a minute, for sure. As for permits about drug paraphernalia and the, the different permits and mandates, that would be definitely a provincial government question. I don't have any of those answers as well, but I will defer your question to our manager around any, any type of permits that had been given. As you know, there was one attempt at a permit after they had put a gazebo in because they had failed to get a permit, and that since has been taken down. So other than any other permits required, I'll, no, and our manager's shaking her head, there's been never a permit application through to the city of Charlottetown in regards to the Charlottetown or the Prince Edward Island.
No, no, you've already asked to, just one sec. No, let, let, no, let, Donna, just for the public record, could you turn on your mic and just state what your head shaking indicates?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just saying, no, we've not received any applications for any permits.
Okay, so, no, you've already asked to, Counselor Twill, we have to move on, come on.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to defer to our CAO. You've already asked twice, so we're moving on.
Yeah, you can ask under police. CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Thank you, Your Worship. I mean, for clarification, we regulate land use. So this, this came under an application of institution which, which fix, which matched the, the appropriate zoning, so it was allowed to go forward, no different than if a hospital was, as an institution, would fit the land use, so we would approve it to go forward. We don't regulate what the hospital does in terms of injections or things being given, just like we wouldn't regulate drug paraphernalia. Approvals for those kind of things would be through the province versus through the city. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the second reading. Oh, Counselor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, CAO Mohammed. I'm, I'm just asking, I, I know we, we say, you know, we granted a, a permit for the Outreach Center, but if, if this type of, I don't know if it's an institution, or, or they put an application in and, and they're allowed to operate this, if this was a bar or a supermarket that was allowed to operate, and it takes up, I think, nine percent of our policing calls, or, you know, we, we have the feedback or the public outcry that this bar cannot operate, wouldn't we shut that down through planning? Wouldn't we take away the application? I know, like, like, say if it's, it's Mitchell's Bar that opened, and we had all these police calls, all these infractions of, of drug paraphernalia, of break-ins surrounding this bar, wouldn't we pull the application? Or couldn't we pull the application? Just because you get an application and an okay to operate doesn't give you carte blanche to do whatever happens, and, and then the residents of the, of, of the city have to suffer that. So, you know, we, we talk about policing and how we're going to get out of this mess, but can't we take the zoning and refuse it because it's caused so much distress, illegal activity? You know, there's got to be something there, and, and I'm just wondering if it's through a planning application that we can, we can do that. Could you answer that?
Deputy Mayor, and then if we have to, we'll ask Donna and our CAO, but I think there's a land use issue and also
Thank you.
a liquor license issue.
Yep, thank you, Your Worship, and through, through Your Worship to Counselor Dron. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're wondering about revoking a land use permit from the Provincial Outreach Center. So I should just back it up a little bit. The, that particular property has been zoned institutional since long before, probably since the beginning of the time, since it was a curling club. So when the province purchased it and moved in an outreach center, there was no additional permission needed from the city because they already had a proper zoning that would cover them under institutional. So in terms of planning and land use, that's kind of where we are with that. But then you can look at other aspects like community impact, community policing, and so for that, I would probably defer that either to our CAO or to our manager. But as far as I know, from a planning perspective, that's as far as we get, get to go. But perhaps there's others can go further, whether it's unsightly premises, or whether maybe there is a building inspection needs to be done, like, I, I don't know, but somebody might be able to answer that, and I'll just maybe defer to a CAO to, she can let us know who might best answer that question for you, Counselor Dron.
Donna, do you want to defer to the CAO? But just when we're deferring to the CAO, with a liquor license, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, that would be a, under the provincial Prince Edward Island Liquor Control Commission, they would revoke that with no license, then they're bootlegging. Bootlegging, we have a whole set of laws that were put back in place back in 2003. Counselor Twill was on council at that time, so there's a lot of regulations over that. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Dron. The tricky point is, is nothing has changed with the use of the land. It's still an institutional use, so it's hard to revoke a permit based on that, because land use looks strictly at land use. So it's the idea of, if you had a commercial use, like a restaurant, and say the restaurant was poisoning people, we can't revoke the land use as commercial from them. What instead we have in place is, like, health and safety officers from the province would come in and shut down the restaurant. So it's a little bit different. In other municipalities, say you had a business that wasn't operating properly and you had business licenses, well, you could take away the business license and stop it from operating this way. But in this case, it's based on the land use, which is institutional, which is, it's a little different. So in terms of health and safety concerns, again, that would be more of a provincial public health complaint system that would kick into effect here versus us from a land use perspective. Thank you.
Counselor Dron, second question.
Thank you. And, and all that sounds, you know, probably what I'm asking, but I know when we, we determine whether it's a liquor license, we could shut it down. But here we see, and I've seen it myself, people that are spaced right out of their minds on drugs, so that's an illegal activity there. You know, we talk about if they were poisoning customers. Well, then, this poison is being used in the bathrooms. We have documentation from that. I've seen people sit there with their legs crossed with a lighter, smoking crack, and there's proof of that. You know, I can give testimony to that. And there's proof of that. You know, I can give testimony to that. We talk about a restaurant, health and safety. If there's, if this is not health and safety, I, I, I don't know what is. And when we give, um, an application approval to operate, do we give approval to operate illegal drugs, illegal activity? You know, I'm, I'm sure if there was a, you know, a zoning permit for the Kawasaki Club that had motorcycles and we were given all our resources of nine percent of our policing to that, we, we would pull their license for that. You know, I, I just, I just don't understand. You know, this, this is a tragedy, as, as we all know. You know, I see it every day I'm down there and I see them strung out. I see them passed out on neighbor's property. We say we can't police ourselves out of this. This is, this is a, a problem through illegal drugs and help. And I know if, if there's people that go there that need help, God bless them, they have to get help. I know I, I, I dealt with addictions my whole life. You have to go to the treatment center. How are these people out front doing drugs, sitting on Ken's corner, strung out? They're not getting help. So if you need help, you go to a treatment center or you go to the hospital, you get help. This is not helping. This has to be shut down. And I, I know people will say to me, you, you're not helping people. Well, I know. I've taken people to the treatment center. I've put them in jail. They need help there. And if we can't stop this, our city's going to be overrun. So I, I'm just, I'm just saying, if we can't do a policing, there's got to be something, whether you get a health and safety officer in to look at this, or, or there's got to be something that we can put our heads to, to stop this. And I know them at a time, so.
Yeah, Council Dran, I, I, I think I've already mentioned this to you. Uh, in our own family, we had that situation, but it was up to my mother. She had to request the help. If the help is not coming from the individual, it's her to treat that person. Any specialist can tell you that. You know the, the case yourself, uh, both are families. So we know where it's coming from. And it's, it's difficult for me to talk about it, but it was difficult then with our mother. So I can tell you that, uh, it's not as easy as just taking them out there. There has to be a wellness. I'm just going to, let, uh, um, CAO, do you want to go first, Council, uh, Deputy Mayor, or did you want to pass it on to our CAO?
I didn't, I didn't really hear. I don't, I don't think Council Dran had an additional question for me in there. But correct me if I'm wrong, Council Dran, but I didn't see an area for me to respond, just more so he was expressing his frustration.
Okay. CAO, did you want to respond? Are you all, okay. Council McTard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, just building on, you know, what has been said here this evening. You know, I think attending the meeting last Tuesday and, and leaving there and really, you know, reflecting on the, uh, stories and the, and the concern and the fears by the residents, you know, I, I was, I, I couldn't help but think about, you know, what we should be doing here as a city council or as a city to address this. I mean, this, this is a serious problem. Uh, and we need to come up with ways, and I, and of course, I'm hearing here tonight that there's not very many things we can do to revoke, uh, any applications or permits or licensing or any of that degree. But, you know, I, I really think that as a council, as a mayor and council and the CAO is, you know, can we put forward a strong message to the Department of Housing regarding a comprehensive review of the management of this facility and the actual programs themselves? Because when I did research on outreach, I do not see where harm reduction is part of outreach. Uh, their basic needs, they're met, you can go in there for basic needs and other services. And, you know, I think that, um, you know, at the very least, we should be putting forward a very strong message because this is a business that is operating, as, uh, Councilor, um, Dran had indicated. Like, you know, if there's any other business operating like this, there would be, there would be consequences to that. And we need to address the management of this facility and the operations of the program and get a review done by the provincial government. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Counselor, did you have something there? Counsel McCabe, did you press your button or can? Okay. Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Your Worship, and I think everybody realizes that, that what a lot of residents are going through is, is not right. Their quality of life is being diminished. But I'm wondering, why can't we have the provincial government, the departments responsible, come in and do a presentation of what's going to change? We know it's not working. Everybody's talked about it's not working. They're looking for a variance. They're looking for the city for another, uh, variance for another year. For me, I'm not prepared to vote that till I find out what's going to change. What programs are being offered, what kind of, what change are they going to make? Because I don't think anybody wants this to go on, uh, uh, for another year. So for me, when they're asked for the variance, I like to know what's going to change the way things are run right now.
Yeah. But the, the two variants, the two variance applications for Wednesday evening is an extension of the emergency shelter and a temporary occupancy variance for the OPS, overdose prevention site. It's not, it's not the facility.
But at some point, Your Worship, it's nice to bring them in and make the presentation to council of what's going to change.
Yeah.
Because right now, everybody's frustrated. Everybody's frustrated.
Yeah.
And I, I just don't think it can go on. I think it's an opportunity here. They're looking for a variance. And I think there's an opportunity for them to make a presentation.
Yeah.
And let council know what's going to change. I, I know what you're saying, that it's, the variance they're looking for is for the beds.
Yes.
Yeah. But I, I do, I do, I, I still think, Your Worship, that there was something that came out, uh, late last week of some changes that they've been making through their public works, through their, uh, meetings that they've had, public meetings. Um, but I'd like them to be able to come in here and elaborate on that, see what the changes are going to be.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to respond to that?
Sure, I can just comment. I see also CAO Eleanor's, um, mic is on as well. Just to clarify, that Wednesday evening, there's, there's two applications, two, two applications, two different departments. One is an extension of the already approved shelters that they asked for last year for one year. Now they're asking for another year. The other application is for, to move in a modular unit. This is through the Department of Health, a modular unit into the same facility to operate what they call an OPS. So we haven't seen those applications yet. So to Council Bernard's, um, to build on what Council Bernard said, you know, the frustration is there. There's a lot of unanswered questions. And, um, hopefully, some of those unanswered questions will come on Wednesday. But it's certainly not a bad idea either for, um, for any level of government to come in and speak to council so that we can continue to stay out of these silos and try and work towards a positive outcome for everybody. So, thank you.
CAO Eleanor, for those applications, both departments will have to make presentations on Wednesday evening, correct? Or not correct?
Thank you, Your Worship, yes. Um, and we can't really discuss these applications tonight in terms of what's involved in that.
No, I know, but they will be making presentations.
They will be presenting as part of the process. Yes.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And I, I think I'm going to piggyback a little bit off Justin in the sense of a resident asked a really good question the other night, and, you know, I don't even know the answer. And I feel like we're constantly playing tennis and it's the province that does this and the city does this and this department has this and this department has that. But someone asked the question, our hands are tied, but what do we need to do to untie our hands? And I, I think that was a real nice grounding point for me is what is a city, or do we have control over with this right now? Because we keep going saying the city gave approval. The city has never given approval for our outreach center for any of these places, okay? But they're problematic within our city. So what do we have control over? We, we oversee our police department.
Correct.
Okay, so there's where we have a little bit of control. And we've had a great presentation there, take the first step to come out, listen to residents and whatever.
Correct.
But from there, what needs to happen is maybe we need to collaborate and, and put a little pressure back to where the, the decisions are made, but we shut down bootleggers in our city. How did that happen? Was that a city decision or was that a collaboration with the partner and the, with the province and the city? What needs to happen in the next steps? But we can sit here and we can always talk about these same issues. But if we keep working in our own silos, we're never going to come up with any solution. We have a major problem in our city and somehow we have to come up with a plan that we have control over to be able to move this forward, to figure out solutions.
Well, as a member of the Finance, Standing Committee for Finance Administration, it was discussed at the last meeting to look at, uh, getting six more police officers to get more boots on the ground because that was, uh, one of the themes that was at the July 19th meeting at the Confederation Center and the other night also. Okay, Counsel, Counsel Twill, you spoke, if, if you go three times, everybody else, like, no, we have to move on. Nope. Yeah. But no, we're still talking about the same issue.
The second one was on the outreach center.
Yeah. Well, the outreach center is not on the agenda because that, on, under the two, two variances for Wednesday night, correct me if I'm wrong, it's dealing with an extension of the temporary emergency shelter and a new, uh, variance or variance for, uh, an occupancy permit for an OPS.
I understand that, but we're dealing with an emergency situation.
Yeah.
Okay, this is an emergency.
It is. We, we know that.
It's an emergency.
Yeah. And we had a meeting the other night and the police chief is in charge of the Community Police Action Plan. He's collaborating with, uh, with other stakeholders to get more information so that we work, just as Counsel McCabe said, what we did back in 2004 in bringing this whole issue of the illegal sale of alcohol in, uh, unlicensed establishments, worked with the provincial government and that was taken care of. So we have to move on. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that this is under my report on planning and heritage. So the last question that was asked was from Counsel McCabe, but I didn't hear a question in there. So just before I conclude my report, Counsel McCabe, did you have a question for planning and heritage? Or was it just, uh, some words?
We're trying to clarify everything that's been said so that we're wrapping it up into a.
Look, it's an issue that is not going to go away and we have to deal with it. So we have two readings. Second reading of the zoning development bylaw for low-density residential to medium-density residential at 480 482 Queen Street.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD-270, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for 480 482 Queen Street, PID 371 203, from the low-density residential zone to medium-density residential townhouse zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD.270, as it pertains to 480 482 Queen Street, PID 371 203, as attached, be read a first time and approved and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council.
Shall it carry? Okay.
Okay. Whereas the bylaw to amend the city of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD-270, as it pertains to 480 482 Queen Street, PID 371 203, as attached, was read and approved a first time on August 14th. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, um, September 11th today, 2023, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall it carry?
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Okay. Um, do you wish, could you read the next, second reading of the zoning development bylaw to amend, uh, to allow for mixed-use residential development at 257? You're going to read that out? Great, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. To adopt, uh, bylaw PH-ZD-271, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for portions of 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 682, 265 Mount Edward Road, 390 708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 757, and Mount Edward Road parcel with PID 390 690, from the low-density residential zone to comprehensive development area zone. An Appendix B, comprehensive development area parcels and permitted uses, uses for portions of 257 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 674, 261 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 682, 265 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 708, 269 Mount Edward Road, PID 390 757, and Mount Edward Road parcel with PID 390 690, to allow for mixed-use residential development consisting of apartment buildings and townhouse. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, uh, PH-ZD-271, as it pertains to 257, 269 Mount Edward Road, as attached, be read a first time and approved and be read a second time at the next public meeting of council.
Shall it carry? Shall it carry?
Whereas the bylaw to amend the city of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD-271, as it pertains to 257, 269 Mount Edward Road, as attached, was read and approved the first time on August 14th, 2023. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Counsel Dran, no.
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall it pass? No. Okay.
There's two sets of stickers.
That's it, deputy? Okay. Human Resources, Counselor Justin McTard, Ward Two.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, the Human Resource Committee last met on September 5th. Uh, the minutes of the meeting are included in your package. There are no resolutions this evening, and if there's any questions, I'll do my best to address them. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
As you know, the meeting that we held first with Junior High School, uh, there was talk about, uh, discrepancy in not enough police officers here in the city of Charlottetown. So what I'm asking in collaboration with the Police Department, as you're the Chair of Human Resources, um, what I'd like to know is where we're at from a regional and national perspective when it comes to policing here in the capital city. We are a full-service community. Not even during the peak times of the year, we're servicing well over 100,000 people a day. So I, I think we need to look at what, what it would take, now whether it's five officers, 10 officers. And I think we need to take a very serious look, uh, an examination of where we are. Again, I'll reiterate from, from a regional perspective and from a federal, from a national perspective. How many police officers we need to effectively police this city? So, you know, we hear about, uh, not functioning and operating in silos. I, I would ask you to embark upon that exercise, working with, uh, working with the, uh, Police Department. Uh, so we can have that information. I think we need to be much more informed. I know full well that we are understaffed. I've, I've known that for years. But coupled with how many police officers required, um, I think we need to look at as well, uh, what our mandate is in terms of policing. I think we need to look at all of that. Uh, there was many surprises at, at that meeting, uh, last Tuesday. I'll, I'll get into that under police. But if you can take that under advisement, I think that's critical, it's crucial and dispensable. Thank you.
Counsel McTard.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Twill. Uh, I don't disagree with, you know, your, your comments regarding, uh, our police force and ensuring that we have adequate resources to cover off, um, the needs of the city as a whole. I, I do know there was, there was some questions in there, but I don't believe I could address those. I think they may cross over into protection services. Uh, so if you wouldn't mind, and, and the manager of HR isn't here this evening. Uh, so we'll take those comments back and kind of address, I think you had some direct questions in there, um, around that. And to come back to you at a later time and counsel here to provide that information. But I'll certainly put that on the, uh, our, our agenda.
And Counsel, Counsel Twill, just one sec. It, it will be coming up under Finance and Protective and Emergency Services. Yeah. And it's also in the KPMG report, so yeah, this is some, Counsel Twill.
Great. Uh, the other thing is, I'm given to understand that, um, you know, there's, there's, there's monies available at the provincial and federal level. So. So I'd ask you to exhaust all of those avenues, all of those vehicles, to see where we can acquire funding from an operational perspective, not just capital to purchase, you know, technology and other amenities that are required. I'm also asking from an operational perspective, because if you look at what's happening, I see the province funding millions and millions of dollars to NGOs. They're operating some of these facilities, so I think, I think I'd like you to take that under advisement, too, and to examine and explore what the opportunities are to request funding from the province and from the federal government. I think that that's reasonable, I think it's timely, and it's also imperative, you know, because we only have so much money here at the municipal level, and I think the province and the feds have to come to the table with additional funding dollars. And again, that's a reasonable, respectful request.
Counselor Matarde.
Thank you again, Counselor Twill. I agree, you know, there's likely some good opportunities out there to tap into some additional resources and funding. Apparently, there might be a discussion here tonight regarding the Finance Department, but also at the provincial and federal level to support our policing services, you know, especially around the circumstances that we're being faced with within our cities. So all of that will be taken under advisement. I appreciate the comments and the advice, and thank you for that.
Yes, and CPS, do you have their motto, protect and serve? Okay, Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to make a comment, Your Worship. It's not up to HR to decide how many police officers we need. It's up to the Protective and Emergency Services during the budget, and finance, which comes back to us. Human Resources don't think it's involved whenever the money's in the budget and the particular amount of officers. So that's, and I believe we brought this up before, and that's been talked about in the Police Services Committees, so. But it's, just to stay on track, it's Protective and Emergency Services that would make the request for the extra police officers, and why, and finance would be responsible for finding money.
Yeah, that's why the notice, the motion is going from finance to Protective Services. Okay, Counselor Matarde.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bernard. Despite that, I think from an HR perspective, we certainly can, you know, contribute where we can in these aspects of additional hiring and work with Protective Services, Emergency Services, and other departments if we need to. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's working outside the silos. Go ahead there, Counselor Bernard.
No, no, that's fine. I was just going to say that every department, whenever we go through the budget, we have hiring in every department, it ends up with Human Resources to be able to put out the, put out the, they call it the descriptions.
Numbers.
Job descriptions for the jobs, so, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Matarde, thank you very much. And next report is the Standing Committee for Protective and Emergency Services, Counselor Kevin Ramsey, Ward Five.
Hit your mic there. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Your Worship. We met on August 22nd, the minutes are in your package. There's two resolutions for your, for your consideration. If I may, Your Worship, I'd like to thank our police chief for hosting that meeting Tuesday night at Birchwood. Emotions were high, everyone knows what it's all about, and I personally would like to thank the chief for taking the time and the effort for setting all that up, him and his management team. And furthermore, the chief, for a week before that, was around knocking on doors, talking to residents, make sure they're there, and to bring all their concerns. So that I would like to thank personally the chief on that one, because he put a lot of effort in this. You can go around to other cities, and I don't, he, their police chief would go around, they probably sent officers around, but he took the time away from his busy schedule, and at night, and in the rain and everything, and he did it. So I, so chief, I'd like to thank you for that. If you have any questions, which I know there's going to be a ton of them, fire away.
Well, did you get some phone calls? Okay, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey, for your report, and I'd also like to take this minute moment to thank Chief McConnell for organizing the meeting. I know it's not always an easy thing to do, but you and your staff were there, heard the concerns of the residents, and we're hoping now maybe you're able to take the next steps for that. Counselor Ramsey, I have two questions I've been asking a little bit around. I noticed in your minutes that there is going to be a preparedness for the focus for the Fiona Report coming to your committee in September, but I've received a lot of calls, especially this week, with residents that are quite anxious about the potential storm that's going to come our way again this season. And I guess, I know our EMO team is professional and ready to go, but what I'm not confident in is that our residents of Charlottetown know what the process is going to be in the case of another catastrophic storm here on the island. I guess looking for things like, you know, before the power goes out, it would be great to be able to say, in the case of this, you can go to these centers. This is kind of how it's, I'd love to know, you know, who's operating the centers. I worked hard last time, a lot of us did, to get out and volunteer our time, but I don't want to be called the morning of to say you're required for shift. What's our plan? I think we need to be really organized, and I need to understand what that plan is, but I think our residents really need to understand that plan. That's my first question. And then I have one more, I might as well throw it out, and you can... I also am wondering about the three new hires in our Fire Department from April, where those positions sit. I know we felt that there was a real need for safety for, to hire three new positions. I understand that there's an issue with arbitration and contract and yada yada, but I don't know how, if the need wasn't there back in April when they signed their contract, how we're still not supplementing our force and having these people on shift. So I guess, you know, when can we expect these hires to begin working? Those are my two questions I'd like to clarify.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you for your questions, Counselor McCabe. They're great questions, and as you know, we all got an invite for tomorrow for the EMO for an update and a training, and I know some are still working today time, they cannot attend, but that's going to be an update and where we're at with our EMO, and I would like to pass, if I can, Your Worship.
Go right ahead, sir.
On to the Fire Chief, and maybe a bit more, Chief.
Chief Mayby.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and through the Chair, to Counselor McCabe. First question in regards to EMO, as Counselor Ramsey mentioned, there is some training tomorrow for the elected officials, and we've already had two training sessions for all of our department heads, seconds and alternates. The plan for weather events, we have an all-hazards plan, and what that means is it's an all-encompassing plan in regards to what each member of the city's organization is going to be responsible for in regards to reception centers, emergency responses in regards to fire and police, public works notices, like having clear streets of snow and/or trees, et cetera. So when there is a forecast for a extreme weather event or another disaster of any kind, we meet as an emergency measures organization, and the emergency measures coordinator, which would be myself, would make a recommendation based on our risk assessment on of the forecasted event to the executive group, which consists of mayor, deputy mayor, two counselors, and our CAO, for the authorization to move into whatever stage we had to move into. As I mentioned earlier, just when we were talking before, counsel, we do not have an EMO staff with the city. We need to grow that department out a bit. Right now, it's everybody doing their best to backfill locations or wear a second hat and fill a duty, and we do that rather well. All of our departments and all of our department heads do that job effectively well. So hopefully that answers the first question. Second question in regards to the three firefighters. When the case was made for the additional firefighters last year and approved by mayor and council, it was so we could move into a platoon system and have a more balanced schedule that allowed for work-life balance for our firefighters. We haven't been able, at this point, to come to an agreement with the union on a trial schedule. We are still awaiting arbitration, which has all of those details included in there, so we can't really talk about those matters, but we were just trying to get a trial schedule in place so we could actually get the three members employed and change the schedule at the Fire Department, which drastically needs changing.
If you have a follow-up, we'll just get through the other speakers or the other requests to speak. Deputy Mary Yankoff, and then Counselor Matarde, and Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, thank you for your report, Counselor Ramsey, and thank you, Chief McConnell, for your, for you and your team with the information session that you provided at Birchwood last week. I just wanted, and I'm sure everyone has read it because it's in your report, I just wanted to point out the increase in crime against property and persons and how, how much it's growing. So, I mean, that could be lots of reasons, but certainly a topic that's been heavy in the conversation today. So our crime rates are growing in both of those areas, so, thank you.
Counselor Matarde.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the Chair. Thank you, Chief McConnell, to you and your staff for the Town Hall meeting last Tuesday. I think it was a great opportunity for residents to express their concern and frustration, and also to share their stories. You know, it certainly is not good. But anyhow, what I want to address is, the last meeting when we passed the motion to have this meeting, we talked about an action plan, and I was very specific at that night that we wanted to commit to that meeting with the feedback that was provided by the residents and come up with an actionable plan. So my question then is to you, the Chair, is when would we expect to see an action plan as a result of the feedback that was received the night, last Tuesday night, by the residents, and a timeframe of which that would be shared with council and the community?
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Counselor Matarde. Chief, would you like to, could I refer that to the chief?
Yes, you can.
Is it operational? Thank you.
Chief Police.
Your Worship and Chair, certainly the community consultation part of the night was a very important cornerstone piece of any action plan that will have to move forward, but there's much consultation that has to be, has to be done, and over the next days and weeks, I'll be meeting with various people, looking for input on what, what that action plan should include. We know, we've heard firsthand the testimonials, but we need a broader perspective on, on finding sustainable remedies to some of these situations. So I can't give you a specific date, I can tell you that we're working very hard to make that a reality and report back to council, but when we do so, we just wanted to make it meaningful and not just, not just a token gesture.
Counselor Dron and Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, thank you, Counselor Ramsey, for your report. I have a number of questions, I'll break them down. One, there's a couple of points to it. I know in the presentation where we held at Birchwood and the community came out, that was terrific, and all your management team were there. I appreciate that, and thank you for that. But one question that came up was, you received direction from a federal prosecutor not to charge for small possessions. And I'd just like to know, was that from a certain prosecutor here? Does it come from the federal government? You know, I have a couple of questions, so if you write them down. What's the person's name? Or, you know, can you appeal to his boss or her boss that if it comes from there, not to, to charge for just minor possession? I think, you know, when you, when you take into account someone walking down with a quart of rum, well, if a police officer sees that, then you would take the person and, you know, charge him for the rum, probably put him in jail if he's intoxicated. Why wouldn't we be doing the same thing if a person was, was whacked right out of it on drugs, you know, and had small bit of possession? Why isn't that person charged? You know, I'll go back to the scene, a couple of people sitting there with a pipe smoking it, you know, you have cameras there, is there someone watching this activity go on? Why aren't those people charged? I know you discussed that this is not a, an issue about trying to police us out of this problem, because homelessness and drug paraphernalia and, you know, the issues are two separate things, and, you know, I'm kind of trying to separate them as well. I asked you last month if the person that made the threats to come back and shoot the person and burn his house down, was he arrested? I didn't get a, I didn't get a response from that. And I know officers have a way of determining if you're on drugs or not, like a person that's intoxicated while driving. You can, you can easily take them out a breath sample. If not, you do the drug test with a pen, and if their eyes are jumping. So if we have a person that's down on the street, and, you know, you feel that, that they are intoxicated by drugs, why aren't they arrested? Because it's not an allowed activity, for sure. So if he's staggering, and, you know, he just did it on a needle, or she did a needle, why can't the police, you know, charge him for intoxicating by drugs and arrest them? And the last one, you know, the curling club is there to help people, and if they help, that's awesome. But why are they allowed to hang around after hours? You know, if it was at an establishment, a restaurant or a bar, it's over at eight o'clock, they have to be dispersed, they can't be standing around there. So those five questions, you know, I don't know if you can answer them, but, but do your best, and hopefully you can, thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, just, Counselor Dron, just to add on what you were asking about, do you remember the slide you referred to as the Drug Prosecution Challenge?
Yes.
So it read, "In August 2020, the Public Prosecution Service of Canada issued a directive asking federal lawyers to avoid prosecuting simple drug possession cases unless there are major public safety concerns." So who defines, just to add to your question, who defines major public safety concerns? Like what is a major public safety concern? And to pursue only the most serious. So who defines most serious cases? Those questions come up when I saw that, that slide. That's why I took a picture of it. I have it on my phone just to bring it up. If that, could you add that to that, are you all right to add that to the...
Oh, perfect, yeah, anything.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yes, thank you for those questions, Counselor Dron, they're great questions, and that we all have, and me, along with a lot of the residents, was surprised when that was up there with the federal prosecutors, how they don't want to entertain small crimes and things like that, and I think our chief said, or the message out of the gym that night was asking our chief to go and fight for that, to have that changed. Now, that's what I took out of that, chief, and maybe for the other ones, like I know there's a few of them that are operational, like whether someone was arrested or something for threats along the line, and so if you'd like to maybe elaborate on them, please.
Yes, chief, is it all right? Do you want to address those questions?
Uh, yeah, so let me, let me do my best to answer those questions. So certainly, it's a federal policy directive, and it really, you know, I think it's hard for a lot of people to understand, simple possession, open possession of narcotics, and it comes down to, you know, the federal approach to harm reduction, and, and this approach, especially people that are addicted to drugs, looking for alternatives to divert them to before prosecution. Any change in that, if you were further into this issue, would have to be done from a regional perspective. So as chief of Charlottetown, certainly I will be voicing my concerns along, at our Chiefs of Police Association and to the Minister of Justice, looking to help raise awareness to the impact it is having in our jurisdiction. And, but this is, if you look across the country, our approach is no different than any other police service in the country that's faced with this challenge, and, and then certainly you have the balance of the complicated issue of seizure of, of drugs when it comes to people that are addicted or in possession of them. You know, it's certainly a delicate balance, because you can create a much bigger and dangerous situation than you're trying to, to fix, and so that there's no easy solution to that issue. And so the second question regarding the threats that were issued, certainly, you know, I can't answer that. I don't talk about operational issues on the floor here, and I have great confidence in my staff that the situation was addressed appropriately. Certainly, the drug recognition, you know, it's... Certainly, the drug recognition, you know, it's, whether people are using drugs, again, it goes down to the same issue. It's certainly the capacity to deal with it is, is one reality. That's, you know, we, we know that drugs are often compensation, you know, for deep rooted mental health issues of people that are self-medicating. Putting those people in jail is certainly not an approach I recommend. I think, you know, advocating for services to help deal with it, especially mental health services, is best, the effort's a better place there. And the hang around after hours regarding, especially in the Outreach Center, again, on the face of that question, that certainly seems like something we should be doing. But what we have been realizing when we do that, that we see an increased calls for services from the neighbors in the surrounding areas, that the people that we're displacing from there are into people's yards and backyards and trespassing. So, trying to find the balance there is, is something that happens on a nightly basis. And certainly, it's, it's not an ideal situation in any, in any counts. Your Chair, I have four of Counselor Duran's questions. I might have missed one there, Counselor Duran. But sorry if the...
Counselor Duran, you can follow up. This is your second question. But if you have more, just loop them in, and that way he...
This is, this is the one that, you know, and I understand, you know, you feel that, you know, it's, it's not a, a way to address the illegal drug use of, of arresting a person. But I know as, as a young person growing up, you know, if you woke up in jail hungover, you'd be saying to yourself, listen, you know what? I, I gotta get a different path. And, and I think that if we don't arrest for illegal activity, especially drug activity like this, they, they just continue on down the road. You know, when you, when you, when you're in jail because of being intoxicated, you have to make a life decision, like, like a lot of us did in, in high school or shortly after. You know, do I go down this road or do I not? These people that have mental health and drug addictions, you know, I, I certainly understand, and I'm compassionate about that. But if we allow them to continue down the road without having any consequences, without being arrested, their, their lifestyle and, and their focus is not going to change. You know, you, you can say these things that it's not helping, but I think eventually, somebody wakes up in a jail and has to say to themselves, look, I, I need help. And the jail is where you get help. There's counselors there, there's addiction workers there, you know. I, I just, I know what you're saying, you believe, but I believe different. I've lived it, I know about it, and you're not going to get these people that are, that are drug addicted off the street and else we, we help them. And to help them just to allow them to continue walking down the street, doing their drugs, doing a crack pipe in a corner, I, I believe that's not the way to help. I may be wrong, but, you know, your idea, or not necessarily it's your idea, with all due respect, I'm certainly not putting the blame on you. But we have to change what we're doing now, because it's not working. So, I don't know where we're going to get help to, to, to change, to change this, but, you know, I, I, I ask you to look into something, or if you have to go to federal prosecution or, or with someone else, whether the province or something, we have to stop what's going on now. And thank you for being honest to answer my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Twill, Counselor McHart, and Counselor McCain. Counselor Twill.
I, I want to follow up on the Public Prosecution Service of Canada as well, because that really caught me off guard when I saw that up the, on the, on the screen at the meeting at Birchwood Junior High School, because I, I've been consistent bringing up drugs over the last number of years. Of course, it's intensified with the, the opening of the Outreach Center, you know, which is a magnet for all of these illegal activities that are taking place. Drug sales, drug usage, distribution, drug paraphernalia. It's, it's a one-stop shop.
Okay.
Make no mistake about it. But the question, the first question I have is...
Can you wrap them up into a couple of questions?
Pardon me?
Can you wrap them up into a couple of questions, so the chief can answer them all? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good. So, the Public Prosecution Service of Canada issued a directive.
Yeah.
Now, who is the Public Prosecution Service of Canada? Is that the minister? The federal minister? Is that a bureaucrat at, at the senior level? Like, who made that determination? Was that, was that legislation that was passed by an act of parliament and the House of Commons? That's my first question. Asking federal lawyers to avoid prosecuting simple drug position, possession cases unless there are major, major public safety concerns to pursue only the most serious cases? Well, unless there are major public safety concerns. Well, the Outreach Center and what's happening in that community is a case in point. There has been major concerns, major safety concerns. Nobody here can dispute that fact. Breaking enters, invading people's properties into their homes, stealing, theft, intimidation, doing drugs in their property. I think if you were to look at the checklist, it's all there. So, despite what, what that, you know, two or three, two or three sentences, some kind of a declaration come from, from that particular agency, it's, it's all there. So, I guess it's a matter of interpretation. I would argue, and the community would argue, yes, yes, there is major cases, and yes, it should be dealt with in a major way. So, that's, that's the first, that's the first thing I'd, I'd like to address. The second thing is, Chief, you said...
Two questions. You got another question?
Pardon me?
You have two questions down? You want another one?
Would you let me finish?
Yep, please. Because time's ticking.
Pardon?
The time is ticking because others want to speak.
Okay. So, so the second question is, you said at the conclusion of the meeting, you told the media that it's going to be zero tolerance when it comes to, you know, trespassing on people's properties. I guess my question is, why wasn't there zero tolerance prior to that public meeting? Why wasn't there zero tolerance and all of the, all of the things that were happening in that community? Because this has been going on for a long time. And, and really and truly, the taxes that our people are paying for, they weren't getting the service in return. They're paying big taxes, but they weren't getting the services in return. So, my question is, why wasn't there zero tolerance when it came to trespassing and, and some of the illegal acts that were taking place?
Thank you, Counsel.
And my third, my third is, in terms of, now, I want to go back to that police act. As a chief of police, and I'll share this with you, Chief, I've talked to some of the retired police officers, and, you know, I said, if, if, let's say, for example, if Don Webster was here today, chief that's passed on, I, I, I know and you know, and a lot of people know, he'd have that place shut down in 10 minutes. No questions asked. So, why isn't there, there's got to be some mechanism in place, whether it's a police act, or whether it's, you know, when, when you're talking about the safety and the security of a community that's been totally compromised for the last two years and has intensified over the last number of months, why does, does the community have to continue to tolerate that and live in fear and anxiety? I mean, I got two phone calls coming up here today.
Yeah.
And the two residents were livid, just totally livid.
Okay. So, Counselor Twill, that's five minutes.
Okay.
That's it. That's, you got three questions. He's going to start answering them. Counselor Twill, I, I think that when you make reference to a former chief in this chamber with this chief here that's doing the best he can, I just find that very disrespectful, because, no, no, just let me finish.
Okay, if you want it to be.
He, no, no, let me finish. He, 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 no, sit down.
Point of order.
So, he is doing his best, and he showed it last Tuesday night. Now, I, I don't know if it's just me, or if it's the other, if council is seeing it in the same, through the same lenses, but this chief, in the last year he's been here, has taken on one of the biggest issues, not just in this community, but right across this country. I was on a Zoom meeting this morning with AMC, Atlantic Mayor's Congress. Small communities like Amerist are dealing with it. Happy Goose, Happy Valley Goose Bay's dealing with these issues. Our chief is doing the best he can. And Don Webster, rest his soul, just like his father Stern Webster, were great police officers and great police chiefs, but this guy, chief of police Brad McConnell, is doing a great job.
I am speaking from the chair, because I am, you know what? I've listened to you, and, and I've, I've listened to you, I've listened to you, and in many meetings, come down on this chief, and I, you know what? This chief is doing the best he can. Counselor, Counselor Ramsey, please answer the question.
Thank you very much, and I guess we got to start showing a little bit of respect. And what happened years ago with former chiefs and everything, the world has changed since then. We, in the city of Charlestown, and I'm speaking from a taxpayer and a resident and a father and a grandfather, we never seen this even up to eight years ago, how this is all going on, but it's changed. And as the mayor basically stated, Moncton's a mess, Somerside's a mess, there's all other places, because I, I meet with the police every week. We are not, this is not a Charlestown-only problem. This is right across, everywhere across Canada. But as, as I stated first, we got to be behind our police forces, and if the residents are not behind the police forces, we as a council got to stand behind them. And to get back to your question, Counselor Twill, about how short of officers we are, we checked, we sort of compare ourselves to Frederick and New Brunswick on certain aspects. We're about 34 officers short. So, if you need a street paved next year, well, maybe that's got to come off the budget and go for police officers. Or if I need a street paved, we, this is when the budget time goes up, we got to remember, we are short, we got 68 officers right now. And if there's four officers going to be at the Outreach Center, that means they're not looking after Ward Five, Ward Four, Ward Eight, Ward Nine. So, this is what I'm saying. Nobody wants the Outreach Center there. This is no ands, ifs, or buts. If I had a magic wand, the Outreach Center would not be there. We go waving on, because it shouldn't be there where schools are, where my granddaughters go. So, I have a personal interest in this also, and I don't want them walking by that stuff too. So, at the same time, our police force, I will stand behind them 100%, and our chief especially, because I meet with them and I know how hard they're working. End of discussion.
Chief, did you get some of his questions? Could you please address them? Is that all right, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chief.
Your Worship, thank you, Chair. I guess I'll address the first question regarding, you know, again, the federal prosecution directive. The pathway to that, I don't have the complete answer to that. You certainly can look across the country and see what's happening out west and to talk about legalization and, and can, you know, kind of form your own pathway there. But, you know, it is a complicated issue, and like a lot of trends, it starts out in Western Canada and works its way across the country. And whether we agree with it or not, when certain policies are adopted, our police services can only work within the framework of the law that we're, we're allowed to. But, you know, certainly, it is impacting our, our community, and I will do my best to relate those concerns. And, but as I said in the meeting the other night, the resources we do have regarding drug enforcement, we're focusing on, you know, certainly the ones that are selling to the vulnerable, selling in large quantity, profiting off, off the impact that this having in your community, and that's where our resources are best served. You know, trespassing, you know, when I went door-to-door over that week and heard the testimonials, it certainly was pretty impactful to the, the, the impact of trespassing on pre-sposed properties, and I certainly was aware of that. But it come down to resources. We're just coming out of our peak busy time of the year. You know, I don't tell anyone about the, the influx in tourism and the burden that has on the police services all the summer. We only have so many officers to deal with the situations, and we must allocate those resources to the best we can. And although sometimes that, you know, can fall short to meeting community expectations, but I can tell you, our officers are working tirelessly to serve their community and, and certainly stand behind it. I did make a pledge for zero tolerance, and we will do our best to live up to that expectation and the foot patrols that you see in that area. How long we can maintain that and current resources, you know, certainly will be up for, up for question. And I do appreciate the support that was offered here tonight. And again, I think it's going to take a collaborative effort to get through this very challenging time. The Outreach Center is the last question. Many times I've indicated, I do not have the power or mechanism under any statute to close that. And that, that's that answer.
Counselor Ramsey, the CAO wishes to add a couple of comments, or...
Oh, yes. Just go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to take a moment here. I know this is a very frustrating topic for a lot of members here in council, but I would like to remind you as a point of order that council, council does have a code of conduct that they must adhere to in this chambers. Specifically, I would like to highlight tonight that 9.1, members of council must adhere to the following principles and provisions. Members of council must avoid behavior that would constitute an act of disorder or misbehavior. Specifically, members of council must avoid conduct that includes, but is not limited to, prejudicing the provision of service or services to the community. So, this, in this case, I ask that any further comments or questions directed at police services recognizes the value of police services to the city, and we may have some challenges, but we must respectfully approach them. Thank you.
CAO Eleanor, thank you very much, and those are the parameters that we work within. And I know that this is a difficult time. It's not just a difficult time for our police services right across the country, right across North America. Counselor McHart.
Thank you, Your Worship. To the Chair, just reviewing back on that slide where we talked about the Drug Prosecution Challenge, maybe just help us, Chief McConnell, in the way of, it's written, it says that in August of 2020, the Public Prosecution Service of Canada issued a directive asking federal lawyers to avoid processing, prosecuting, sorry, simple drug possession. When I think of simple drug possession, I think possibly marijuana. I'm not sure how or what discretion you have as a police chief and services to determine that that would be not considered more than a simple drug possession with illicit drugs of probably heroin or crack cocaine or any of those number of drugs. Also, then it goes on to talk about, unless there are major public safety concerns and to pursue only the most serious. So, who has the discretion to determine what is considered a major, major public safety concern and/or the most serious in that sense? Do you have that, do you have that discretion as the chief of police or your department to determine that this goes beyond those guidelines, I guess? And is, is there guidelines that further flesh out what that means by major public safety? Because I think in the eyes of citizens and ourselves, we would consider this to be a major public safety concern and most serious cases beyond what I would call simple drug possession. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, do you want to defer to your chief?
Yes.
Chief?
Your Worship, I guess I, regarding the, the serious types of drugs, so marijuana, cannabis products are prosecuted under the Cannabis Control Act, which provincial statute, similar to, akin today to what illegal possession of alcohol used to be. What federal prosecutors are mandated to do is to prosecute that of serious drugs, you know, cocaine, crack cocaine, heroin, fentanyl-based drugs. So, there, there is a difference and a different level of prosecution that, that deals with that. You know, certainly, again, you know, I just want to talk about the best use of resources, you know. When we only have a limited amount of resources, we need to be focusing our resources on where we're going to have the best impact. And that is, is focusing those resources on the ones that are selling to the people at the Outreach Center and the ones that are supplying those suppliers. And so, when it comes to discretion about laying charges is one thing, we certainly have that discretion. Having those charges prosecuted is up for the, for the prosecutor's discretion.
Counselor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you again for your report, Counselor Ramsey. I have two other questions that doesn't affect this. So, there's, there's two. I have two other questions that doesn't affect this, so there's two questions. The last couple of months, I go back three months ago, we talked about dilapidated buildings. And you stated that we were going to have the fifteen buildings looked at and we're going to have one every month. At that time, I thought that was, you know, a big grasp, but I look at your notes and it says that this issue was removed from the agenda. So I don't understand, you know, we've said it, we went to one family and we pressured them to, you know, incur costs and to force them into a back alley to make sure they do something. And then we let the other fourteen go and we don't have a list or anything. So I wonder where's your thought or idea that are we not going to process those other fourteen? Or where are we going to go? And I'll loop my second question into that one as well.
Thank you, sir.
I talked about in your notes, again, it talks about the nuisance bylaw allowing construction to start at six AM rather than seven AM. This goes against staff's recommendation as I believe staff thought this would be okay. So we're in a housing crisis, the builders want to get going. At six o'clock, you know, we're faced with very little sunlight, you know, as the hours get closer or closer and closer. So this hurts the builders, whether rain days. I just don't understand if we're in such a housing crisis, an hour, an early start to the day might get a house built earlier and house some people. So those two questions, I can't understand what you're doing here, but could you please explain them to me, please?
And Counsel Dron, there is a motion for the that addresses that, so he can, you can address that, repeat that question when the motion comes to the floor. Is that all right?
Yeah, sure.
So just the first question is about the dilapidated buildings, correct?
Yes, I'll talk to about that. Thank you.
Thank you Counsel Dron for those questions and your question, I guess, we're just going to do the other one later. For the properties, in fact, I had another call with the bylaw officer today. I said, could you break this down? How this works? He said, when they get complaints, and that's the only way that he goes in there, is when they get complaints sort of risen against certain properties, he goes, he takes the fire inspector with him and they check a few things out and then if they think they can, if there's more to be done, they get a building inspector in. So there's three steps and if the building inspector goes in and they check it all out and they don't think it's suitable and it's not safe, then the bylaw officer does up the resolution. He brings this to council, council votes on it. And they go from there and then it turns into an operational issue. After council decides whether they're going to vote for it yes or vote for it no to have it removed. And that's the thing that we talked about this afternoon because I said, I need the facts on it. Out of the fifteen properties, I went back and watched YouTube in that day of that meeting and the questions that were coming for you, which were fantastic. But at the same time, I did not state that, that statement was brought up by two other counselors saying that if there's fifteen properties, it's going to be one a month then. And I couldn't answer that question at that time. But at the same time, we're still working with the people. There's one lady, there's about five of them right now that put in for demolition permits that are on this list that I have and one is just up the street here and what's happening is that the contractor never get back to them. So our bylaw officer, he gave her two more names of people to get in contact. There's another two properties that are owned by the province that they're going to be moved and they're going to be taken down this year. One's going to be moved right out of this area and the other one's going to be taken down. Just one second, I just, there's three or four of them. There's another one that was owned by the province on Richmond Street, which was taken off today because I got the phone call because it's supposed to be torn down. The permit was issued in March. But the person next door has it under IRAC right now, doesn't want it torn down. I mean, the neighbor does not want the place torn down and that just throws me for a loop right there. Because the owner's willing to take it down. Yeah, so there's the five right there that we're working on. We're still working on the first property that's going on. I believe the owners have already been in contact with a construction firm to have it taken down. Maybe Chief Mamie, this is his file because I asked at our last police. Now, once the resolution was passed and everything, does council have anything to do with this? He said, no, it's operational. So maybe Chief Mamie, thank you.
Chief Mamie?
Thank you, your worship, Chair and sorry, who asked the question again? Counsel Dron. Yes, with the properties, vacant properties or dilapidated properties, there is a list as Counsel Ramsey mentioned that bylaw officer, fire inspector and building inspector are going through. None of the buildings are, all of the buildings are at different stages of, I guess, the process. First step, as the counselor mentioned, is an inspection by whoever gets the call, bylaw, fire or building. When they go in to do their initial inspection, if they realize there's additional requirements or additional support required, that's when the team comes together. But there's a process to go through every one of these buildings. There's an inspection. There could be a compliance order made, then they could, the owners could comply with that. And then it's just a time matter before demolition. But all of the buildings are at different stages. None of them are cookie cutter where it's one after the other. Each one of them follows an evolution, a natural sort of flow through our process. The bylaw and adopted codes allow for that and that's where the buildings are and they continue to work through them. Hope that answers the question.
We'd add something to your worship, sorry, Counsel Dron. And there was a place on Nassau Street that was on the list. So the bylaw officer went even today and they checked it out and they checked with the owner. He said, we're doing it over. So they looked in the windows, there's all brand new walls and everything, so they are are sort of progressing with it. Some people are not doing anything, as the chief said, but there's others. Once the bylaw officer goes in and the fire inspector goes in, they said, okay, this is our plan, we're working on it. We're going to fix it up, things along that line, or others are not doing it. And that's when it goes to the next stage. Thank you.
Counsel Dron, second question.
Just a response.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
And I understand and, you know, believe me, I understand and that's why I asked for a deferral two months ago. We have to get our ducks in a row. We have to do this and I can appreciate it takes time with bylaw, fire, police and building inspectors. I understand that. But what I did not understand is why we pushed to get one on the docket and get it demolished and force the family. That's my problem. If we're taking the fifteen and we want to do our due diligence and take our time and, you know, work with the families and all that. I certainly understand that and, you know, I can appreciate that. But when I sat here and I asked for a deferral and we weren't given the deferral, we forged ahead to do the one thing against this family, you know, that's where I had a problem. And I don't want to be coming back here every month, where's the list? Why didn't you do this? You know, this will be the end of it. But, you know, at the time, I asked to do this properly and it wasn't agreed to. And I, you know, I'm disappointed that we didn't do that. Because it takes time and I understand that. I just wanted to say, I'm not going to ask any more questions about it. I just wish we would have followed the process for the fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say, your worship, just want to bring back some history. I know since the chief has become chief, I know he's dealt with a lot of issues for me in my area, a lot of issues that I brought up, they were dealt with very professionally and he's very much of a hands-on chief. And I'm not surprised when I see him organize the meeting in Birchwood and get a lot of the information. So I just want to say that to me, he's been a hands-on chief and he's been excellent. Question I have for the Chair is, a few months ago, we brought up about hiring some new officers. And we're going to bring that back to your committee, you're going to have that discussed and we're going to start start the ball rolling that sooner rather than later. I'm just wondering, I haven't seen anything in the minutes, so I'm just kind of wondering where that is. Because we kind of knew and we said it a few months ago, that, you know, we run the risk of these police officers burning out unless we can hire some more. And I think there was numbers between six and ten that we were looking at. Can you elaborate if that's been discussed in a?
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counsel Bernard. It really hasn't been discussed because we've been going over a few numbers with the chief. As I stated earlier to Counsel Twill, we're about thirty-four officers short. And I would like to see a start as many as possible. But, and I've been told that it's got to come down with the budget time. Is that correct, CAO Eleanor? Or can we just sort of kickstart this right away? But I was told that we're looking at the budget time. The police chief is going to be bringing the numbers to us and we're going to go from there. If it's one officer, eight officers, fifteen officers, this is what we need. Because this is what we as a council want and this is what all the residents want too. So I don't know if it has to wait until budget time, Chief, or your worship, or Eleanor, Chief, go ahead.
That's why it went to finance and finance has put a notice of motion, but Chief?
Thank you, your worship. Certainly we've made our need for resources no secret. And a lot of my personal efforts are also making sure that you know, that we have support from the provincial government. We have received and put proposals into provincial government and received and have received some support from them. But we will be through the budget process, putting some additional asks forward and and certainly, you know, want to make sure that those are done in a responsible way and informative way.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon. No, he's there. He's next, he's on the list.
Thank you, your worship. Two quick questions, one for Chief Mamie through the Chair. Just wondering, I know it's fall now, where the underwriter story is for the new fire hall? What's taking place there? And second one is just a comment in regards from the request for the construction industry. I'm against and I'm getting phone calls and emails. My residents in Highfield are against it as well for having construction start at six AM. Teachers, nurses, shift workers, people with small children, they don't want hammers going at six AM. They'd rather see them work an hour at the end of the day because at four o'clock, there's not a hammer being swung in the subdivision adjacent to me. So work an hour later.
Just leave that to the resolution. There is a resolution in the package.
Okay.
So your question?
Just one question for Chief Mamie.
Okay. Counsel Ramsey, do you defer, yeah?
Thank you, your worship, Chair and Counsel McKinnon. Fire underwriter survey, they're still, we're working with all of the information being gathered. They haven't yet planned the location visit, but that will be forthcoming here, so we're hopeful here. We originally hoped for early fall, it's probably going to be a little later in the fall, but that's what we're working towards diligently.
Counsel Twill.
With regards to drug sales that have taken place around the outreach center, residents are telling me that more drug sellers are there across the street and surrounding the outreach center. And the question is, what is being done to address the extensive and intensive drug sales around the outreach center? And, you know, is the police aware of that? Which I believe they are because the community is aware of it, so if the community is aware of it, the police are aware of it. So what are the expectations to nullify the amount of drugs that are being sold in between two city schools? I would argue that there should be an urgency to deal with the amount of drugs that's taking place up in that, up in that community. And the second thing is, people are talking throughout the city about people coming here from all over Prince Edward Island. You know, they're coming here because it's a great time. You can come, you can do drugs, no repercussions, no consequences. You can go to the outreach center. I mean, I don't know what role social services playing, but people are coming here from all over Prince Edward Island. We even heard last week Summerside's talking about, well, we're going to, yeah, we'll send them down to Charlottetown. Plus, plus there's also, as I understand it, a lot of people coming here from all over Canada because of the type of treatment and the flexibility that they have and the freedom that they have to be able to come here and, you know, live it up because there's no consequences, there's no deterrence.
Is that the question? Are you asking Chief for the question and the numbers?
I'm working up to the question. Is that all right?
Yeah, but that's, your second time is for two minutes.
You know, you do the same thing.
No, finish up.
But anyway, you have a habit of that, but that's nothing new. So my question is, my question is, through the Chair. My question is, do we know what the actual numbers are that are coming here from all over Prince Edward Island? And the second question is, do we know how many people are coming here from all over Canada? Because of the flexibility and the freedom and just, hey, just do whatever you seem fit at the expense of the community. Do we have those numbers?
Counsel Ramsey.
And I've been hearing the same thing and I've been bringing up the same thing. There's a few incidents that happened in the city that they're not from here. They're coming from the other side. How they get here, I don't know. But at the same time, I was very upset last week and in fact, I think I phoned your worship when I seen it in the newspaper and then the next night on Compass, when they closed the encampment in Summerside and said, send them to Charlottetown. Like, out of sight, out of mind, I guess, for some communities. That's not fair to Charlottetown because we have our own resources, our own people we have to look after. And if they're coming from everywhere, I don't know how we can stop that. I asked that question after the meeting Tuesday night to the management at the outreach center. I said, how many is from the other side? How many is doing this and so on, all these questions that you asked? I didn't get a response. Like she said, we have data, but nobody wants to read the data. I mean, they don't believe us. So I just turned around and I said, well, that's your data, that's not ours. Because that's not what we're hearing out in the public, we're not hearing on the street. So Chief, maybe if, one of the, Chief, do you have anything more to add to that?
Chief?
Your worship, you know, certainly we don't have a mechanism to capture the full extent of people coming from other jurisdictions regarding services. Certainly through our interactions with the police, we do have and recognize we are seeing people that we're dealing with that are not from the city, from other parts of the island and other parts of the Maritimes and sometimes the country. But we do not have a mechanism to capture the full picture of that migration.
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
I just think that, I think that we could spend five hours, five months talking about what we're talking about. We heard really clear tonight that Chief McConnell has said he cannot go in and shut down the outreach center right now based on what's going on. We know that the outreach center is problematic. We know that the outreach center organization adventure group is trying to put things in place that they're thinking they're going to help people. We know that people get help when they want to get help. We know that, you know, it's, I think the outreach center maybe is helping people stay ill, making it convenient. It's a great spot to go and hang out and get your drugs and do your things, but this is a much bigger issue than that right now. Our legislation needs to change. We need to stop just using harm reduction as our only treatment option for people who are really sick. We have, we need a holistic approach. We can't group all these people together. Some require institutional support. Access to services need to improve. Lack of housing is an issue. These people don't have a place to call home, so they're going to land somewhere. Poverty is an issue, trauma is an issue. The province has got to, we have to get a little more pressure there. We need to get some buy-in, we need to be collaborative. We need teamwork within our own units or levels of government in order to try to make this a priority and start to work through this. We cannot group everybody under one umbrella here. We can't blame one area, we can't blame one level of government. Everybody's working in silos. The issues are still there. I don't think we can continue to talk about any more of this this evening until we start to figure out where to. Otherwise, we're not going to get through any other of our business that we have to do tonight.
Counsel McCabe, you're right there. There are some stats that we're trying to get from the outreach center. Counsel Ramsey?
Hundred percent Counsel, you know, Counsel McCabe, we can sit in here for a whole weekend and debate this thing and saying where we're going, whose fault it is, if it's the province, if it's the city. And I'm in the same as you, like we almost spent an hour on this already. And our police chief, as you stated, cannot go in and shut this place down. We at city council cannot go in and shut this place down. So we got to put pressure on the proper parties to go and do this, that this is what we're hearing from forty-four thousand residents. It isn't just in Ward four, we're hearing it in Ward five, we're hearing it Ward eight, we're hearing it all over from all our residents. They're tired of it. It's a hangout as far as I'm concerned for some people down there. It's a place for It's a place for them to go, and after hours, they shouldn't be hanging around there. Thank you.
Okay. We've got to, no, we have, we're going to the motions. Going to the motions, and we'll get, we'll get, he'll get a response to you. Okay? Yeah, two resolutions. Resolution number one.
Thank you, your worship. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that council does not amend the nuisance bylaw under excessive noise, section 3.7a, to allow building construction to begin at 6:00 a.m. rather than 7:00 a.m.
Counselor Duran, you're on the speaker's list. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you once again for the report, Counselor Ramsey. I see in the minutes here, the committee report, it says that staff's recommendation is that the committee recommend the council to amend 3.7 of the nuisance bylaw to allow building construction at 6:00 a.m. rather than 7:00 a.m. So I go here and I look around the city, I drive around, major construction happening out in East Royalty, major construction happening in West Royalty, new apartments being built. I see these workers coming in and they're working hard all day trying to get housing for our housing crisis. In Sherwood, there's building going on off Mount Edward Road and new apartments to become. I just have a problem of not voting for this. I want to see the Construction Association move forward, get the workers, get the houses up, get the developments going, and then the developments are done. And then, you know, the construction, they go to a different area. It's not one area in particular. It's done by the Construction Association of Prince Edward Island. They're asking the city, us, to vote on it. It's not one particular area, it's all around. So if a neighbor builds beside me and they're allowed to start at 6:00 a.m., they'd get a jump on the day, you know, that's when I'd say, okay, I did what I could do to help out with the housing crisis. So I'm just wondering here, you know, asking council to read your paperwork, you know, these people work well into the night, I know in the dark, they're still working. I go by different sites, you know, they're on the weekends, late at night, trying to get the work done for the next guy coming in. So I'm just going to, I'm going to support it, and I just ask for council's consideration for this. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey? He just responded to. Go ahead, Counselor.
Protective Emergencies, we ask Deputy Chief Sean Coombs, I guess, to do a scan of the, all the certain cities in the Maritimes. Everybody started at seven. The only way that somebody could start was in Fredericton, if they got a special permit for a special job to start at six, but then it fell back to seven o'clock once that job was done. But we went around, we checked with everybody that we knew of, or Sean Coombs did, or Deputy Chief, and that's the information he brought back. So the committee said, well, let's say status quo. So this is why it's here tonight. And they were bringing it to council to say, status quo, seven o'clock in the morning, or, yeah, start at seven in the morning. And in the meantime, I did receive a few emails myself saying, thank you very much for staying at seven o'clock. So like, you're going to have your pros and cons on this thing. There's going to be people who want to start at six, there's going to be people, I wish they didn't start at nine o'clock in the morning because, you know, in some areas. But this is what they did. So we moved it on to council for, like, for your consideration.
Okay. Counselor Matar, and then Counselor Duran will come back.
Thank you, your worship, to the chair. Just so I understand correctly, if we do amend section 3.7a to allow a start of 6:00 a.m., that will also now include and open up for not just construction, but also for things like use of motor vehicle, lawn mowers, chainsaws, other gas-powered or electrical tools or machinery which can cause excessive noise? Is that understood? That if we do that, we're also going to open that up as well for that?
Counsel, Counselor Ramsey, can we just wait? I just want to get some questions. Can he just get an answer to that question soon as we get one from Counselor McCabe? I think it's in line with yours.
It is. And actually, I know that there was a draft bylaw policy in place that was supposed to be under planning around development. They were looking at things like hours of start time, dust and debris, who'd be, like, some of those things. So I'm not really sure. I guess because it technically falls under a noise bylaw, which incorporates all those other things. But I know at one point, there was supposedly a draft policy that was in planning to address some of the development criteria. I haven't seen it, did ask for it. So personally, I think it would belong better over there, but that's just my thought.
Okay. Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counselor McCabe. I think that addresses my, I mean, they seem to, you know, we're really opening up the box here in the way of which, you know, we allow one thing, we're going to have to allow all of these other things that fall under there, which, you know, in some cases, you know, I would not want to hear a chainsaw going at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, let alone even 7:00 a.m. in the morning. So for the reason for that, you know, I think that we would really be doing a disservice to allow all of those things to be going at 6:00 a.m. Thank you.
Counselor Duran.
Sure, sure. And I agree with Counselor Matar. You know, when you do a jurisdictional scan, you put in Cornwall, Stratford, Moncton, and St. John. I'm just wondering if we could go a little wider, you know, go west, you know, go to Ontario where these major developments are happening, just three or four places around and go with them. You know, we're the leader of the island here, we're the major city. This is where our development is going. I'm just wondering, you know, can you go, can you go back and look at a bigger scope, maybe more things, or would just vote on it tonight? You know, like, again, you know, we're in a housing crisis, we've got to get these houses going. And I know a lot, a lot of builders are sitting there waiting. They're up early risers, they want to work all day, and to have them sitting there waiting is kind of a shame. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ramsey, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, and I'm just going with the recommendation was from our deputy chief onto our, onto our committee that day, and they said they agree, and they said, send it to council because it's a nuisance bylaw. And as Counselor Matar said too, like, you know, you start, your hammer's going, then you're going to start lawnmowers going, then you're going to start other things going at 6:00 in the morning. And the nuisance bylaw is there for a reason, there's times around it, and whether, you know, we change it or not, it's up to us tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor McCabe.
I know, it's my second point.
Oh, go ahead.
I was kind of clarifying that other piece. But my point is that I have residents that don't want any construction starting at 7:00. They already start a little earlier because we all tend to squeak the rules out a little bit when we're trying to get business done. I get it that it's important, but 6:00 in the morning on a Saturday or a Friday or whatever, if you're doing shift work and doing whatever, yeah, I'll be, I'll be supporting the recommendation to wait till seven.
Question? Question's called. So, council, you want to read the motion again there?
I want it read again.
Yeah, just read it here, just read it. It's, does not. Counsel. Okay, just read that. Counselor.
That council does not amend the nuisance bylaw under excessive noise, section 3.7a, to allow building construction to begin at 6:00 a.m. rather than 7:00 a.m.
Okay. All those in favor, put up your hand. Okay, all those against? Counselor Twill? Yea or nay?
Yea.
Nay?
Yea.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to go to the next one?
Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck, that the public works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove trees, garbage, and other materials or debris dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense for the following properties located at 51 Cedar Avenue, P I D.396143. Warning posted on July 4, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 42 North Ridge Parkway, P I D.571422. Warning posted on August 14, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 335 North River Road, P I D.910315. Warning posted on August 11, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 296 Allen Street, P I D.274167. Warning posted on August 3, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 84 Scott Street, P I D.573626. Warning posted on July 27, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 69 Edward Street, P I D.345231. Warning posted on July 26, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 31 Peters, St. Peters Road, P I D.274217. Warning posted on August 11, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly bylaw of the City of Charlottetown.
Counselor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And, yeah, about this, I was talking to a major landlord here today, and he's not on the list today. And what he's asking is, you know, I know our bylaw officer is very thorough, he posts a notice on the door, but a lot of times, the landlord would go and clean the area up, and within two or three days, it'd be a mess again. So what he's asking is, is there any way that, you know, our bylaw officer could inform the landlord instead of just putting a notice on the building? Because you go around to some of these places, and I know our bylaw officer, you know, works extremely hard, but the notice doesn't get to the landlord, whether it's a tenant that just takes it off the door and goes in because sometimes they don't want to get in trouble, right? So then it comes here without notification to the landlord. So like I said, this landlord, you know, he's faced with a lot of issues with garbage, with neighbors putting it in his dumpster or his garbage cans that is troublesome. He's trying to come up with some ideas. Maybe the police committee could look at it and come up with an idea of how we deal with this in a better manner. You know, neighbors see empty garbage cans and they tend to throw things in. So it's a burden on the landlord, but most of all, he would wish that he would be notified himself rather than just putting it on his door. So I'm just wondering if you could go back to your committee and make sure that happens? Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
Those are excellent points, Counselor Duran. Thank you for that. And as you and I both know the bylaw officer very well, a lot of, not in this case that you brought up, but in some cases, they're absentee landlords. And what he's trying, he can usually get a hold of most of them because he has phone numbers where they're in B C, Alberta, or wherever they're at. But at the same time, we've been beating this to death since you and I got on, on council, Counsel Duran. We kept saying, we've got to take it out of the hands of council and let them, we've got to nail them right away with this. Because if I was a landlord and if we gave him a fine of $500 the first time it happened, and then the next time we went in two weeks later, as you stated, and the fine was up $1,000, well, then I would certainly look at what's going on on my property or things along that line. So this is where I'm hoping our police and our C A O can change this, take this out of our hands, let the bylaw officer do his job without waiting six weeks of heading back to some properties here, and then the summer's over, for example, and then, you know, things along that line. But in order, in order for us just to put a lien on a property, I could own my property for 50 years, and if there's lien on it, I mean, the city's going to wait 50 years to get $1,000, you know, what it costs us to send public works in there. Like, that's not right. We've got to hit them right away. And how we change that, so I'm leaving that with the chief and the C A O, and let's go from there. Thank you.
So you're calling the question?
The question's called, sir.
Okay, question's called. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. 10-0. Okay. Next report, Parks Recreation. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Didn't see you there, Counselor Beck. That's okay.
Just before we go on to the next Parks and Rec, I do want to do, I just want to make two comments. First comment, I would concur with the work that Constable or Chief McConnell has done in terms of allowing the public to come in and have that, have their say in a very difficult environment. And I know that wasn't easy for you, Chief, and I certainly appreciate the work that you did as well. The second point is, I happen to have something happen today. This is for September 11th, which is a very significant day, one of our most significant events that ever happened in our lifetime. And I happened to run into some Americans today. And for those of you who may not notice, we have the American flag draped over our monument out in front of our fire department as a ongoing commemorative moment towards the fallen first responders that happened in that tragic incident. And I just want to let Chief Mamie know that that did not go unnoticed by American visitors who were in here on a cruise ship here today. So I do know that we have the piece of the tower that's out in the training center, I believe, out in the site. But it's something that is a small, small symbolic move, but it was very much noticed here today. And so good on the police chief or the fire chief for doing that. It got noticed by some of our visitors who were here in Charlottetown today and certainly appreciate it. And when I looked at it myself, touched me too. So good work to Chief Mamie and the firefighters for doing that and recognizing and commemorating that.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Thank you for that. Okay. Parks Recreation and Leisure Activities, Counselor Twill.
Frank Quinn is here. We have one resolution for council's consideration, and I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions on the report? Counselor Twill, we will be doing a open house for the Simmons Aqua Arena facility sometime this month.
Sometime in the fall.
At Simmons or another site?
Not sure. We'll have to look at that.
Okay. Maybe the manager can highlight it in his report. Any questions? No? Go ahead. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I just have a question about the portable outdoor rink. Will that be in the same spot as it was last year? It was just indicated that the landscaping work is ready and for the portable artificial rink this winter. So going down in Founder's Hall in the same spot as last year, that's just what I want to get clarified. Thanks.
Counselor Twill? Twill, do you want to answer that or you want to defer to your manager?
Uh, your worship and Counselor Twill and Counselor Beck, you're correct. It is going down in the same location until we continue on with the next project that could take place at that location.
And the open house for the new Simmons Aqua Arena facility, you looking at a date for that?
Counselor Twill indicated that we are working on it and we are continuing to work on it. So once we have a set date, we'll let the public and yourself know.
September, October?
We're working out the details. So it'll be soon. We just have to have necessary information before we can actually proceed with the meeting.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. I just noticed in the minutes that the county, the committee has approved some pilot project to put containers in the parks for folks to drop off their needles. And I'm just wondering, do we know which parks they're going in, how that came to be? Thank you.
Counselor Twill?
That's a, that's a good question. And there was a lot of debate around that whole, you know, the idea of putting, putting, you call it a needle.
Drop boxes.
Drop offs, or whatever the case may be. I, I'm not sure. Frank is here, he said he's looking at two parks for a pilot project. I, I'll be honest with you, it's strong reservations because I believe it sends out the wrong signal that this is permitted use in our parks. the wrong signal that this is permitted use in our parks. You know, that's another thing with this, this whole idea of drug paraphernalia being distributed throughout the city of Charlottetown. It's all over the city. It's all over the city. It's in our parks. I've talked to parents. I've talked to dog owners that want to walk their dogs in the parks. We don't feel safe walking in our park anymore. We don't feel safe letting our children win the parks anymore. You know, some of them are jumping in their cars and they're going down to Victoria Park. So Frank, could you please outline the two parks that you're, that you're looking at for, again, it's just a pilot project?
Yep. Mr. Quinn?
Your worship and Chair Twill and Deputy Mayor Alana. With regards to the, this was deemed as an operational matter. So we just made the committee aware that we were proceeding with two pilot locations to install community needle drop box for safe disposal. And we're working with the harm reduction coordinator with the chief public health office. And they have an initiative where they're helping to work with communities to try these tamper-proof boxes and locations. So we're piloting two locations. We have, one location is Joe Gaze Park in that vicinity, and another location is Long Confederation Trail, the pathway that is going down to the shelter location. So we're, those are two pilot locations and they, those boxes should be installed very shortly. And we'll be monitoring just to see the impact that it has. As you're all aware, there has been needles located in our parks and our staff are having to deal with it on a regular basis. So we're just trying them, see how they work, and we'll be reporting back to, to our committee and to council in the future.
Okay. Counsel McTart.
Thank you, your worship, to the chair. You know, again, I have some reservation as well in implementing these. However, you know, we, there has to be some safety mechanisms put in place because we know that there is discarded needles, you know, all over the city. So when, when, when the manager talks about, you know, where the location, they're working with the harm reduction team, I question, you know, how much they know as to where there would be larger amounts. I mean, they're all over the city, but you know, George, Joe Gaze Park, sorry, you know, could be a potential place. But I would have to think the park behind Birchwood School is likely somewhere where there's high usage of needles that are discarded. So I, you know, I questioned like where we're getting that data and how we're determining where they best fit, Mr. Chair.
That's, that's a fair point. Those are good points. You know, this whole idea of harm reduction, you know, the jury's still out across this country with respect to, you know, harm reduction, harm reduction versus treatment, you know, clinical treatment. So the jury's still out on that. And I guess what troubles me is that, you know, we're working with, you know, the province. And we're implementing, implementing, you know, some of these recommendations, collaborating with them. Well, we really don't know if in fact it really does work because we don't know. We don't, we don't have the information. I haven't, I mean, I've read articles, the national newspapers, I've read all kinds of them and tried to circulate them to, to all members of council and city staff. So if they're aware of some of the challenges and some of the deficiencies and how dangerous it is, so, you know, where's that empirical data? That's a good point. That's, that's a very good point. That's a good question. We don't have that information here at City Hall. We just don't have it. So I know our manager, along with our director, you know, spoke to, spoke to us as a committee, would like to try it as a pilot project. Again, I expressed my reservations, but that was the committee's wishes. And that's, that's where we're at right now. You know, some of our squares as well, Old King Square, some of the other squares. It's just, it's unbelievable how, how just overnight this city has become, you know, we've heard of communities, communities in bloom. It's now communities in needles. That's, that's what's happening in our city. And, and I can tell you, people would say, well, it's all over Canada and it's all over the world. This is happening. You know what? It's never happened in this city.
Yeah. You're over your five minutes.
Pardon me?
You're over your five minutes. Let's go. Okay? It's half a minute.
I hope I tried to answer your question.
I think you did. Yeah.
We don't photo this.
No, it's, it's just a report. Like, that's, that's all we're doing. And I think we got lots of information. And again, Mr. Quinn, through the chair, the pickleball presentation was a great presentation. I know they followed up with a letter to us. Did we give a response to them from their letter to the department?
Your worship, I just received the letter this morning, so I haven't had an opportunity to read it yet.
But you didn't send a response from our committee meeting to the pickleball?
I'll answer that.
Can you?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer that. You know what? Presentation was done, what, a couple of weeks ago?
August 31st.
So what was that? Two weeks ago? Not even two weeks ago. So with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I, I think you have to give our staff the opportunity to, to not only look at the presentation and as, as our manager pointed out, a letter just came in today. You know, we keep hearing about, you know, supporting our staff. I hear, I heard that earlier. Well, I'd like to support our staff. I think our staff's doing a heck of a job. And I say that all the time. But we have to be reasonable when, 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 you know, we just received a presentation. Staff needs time, time to do their due diligence, which they always do. So.
Got it.
So anyway, I, I know that Frank's working on it as well as Christopher and Nancy and the rest of our crew. So we'll wait to see what the, what the results are.
No, it's just a question for the public record. Counsel, excuse me, Deputy Mary Ankaugh.
Thank you. And I know somebody just brought it up a couple of minutes ago about the, any update on the temporary rink. But I'm more curious of, you know, what, what, do we have an update on the permanent Roundhouse Park rink at Founder's and what the timelines are for that?
Counsel Twill.
Thank you. That's a very good question. I think we're going to be going to, with that whole concept, Deputy Mayor Alana, I think we're going to be going to a public meeting sometime between now and Christmas. Our manager is looking at that as well. So as far as, you know, what's going to take place there from a permanent perspective, we're going through the public consultation process, hosting a meeting. So that's, that's what I can bring to the table tonight. But we, we want to collaborate with the community because I know there was concerns with some of the amenities that were down there and how it's affected, you know, some of the local businesses. I know our manager is aware of that. So we're going to be looking at ensuring that we do communicate with, with, with the neighborhood and the community.
Thank you, sir. It's gonna be a busy fall with the department, Frank. Okay, we got a resolution?
Thank you, your worship. Parks Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Resolution Number One. Moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor McTart. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown approves the Rotary Club of Charlottetown request to install a Rotary Peace Pole at Confederation Landing and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question called.
Deputy Mary Ankaugh. Got a question here?
Thank you, your worship. And I, I read about this in the, in the minutes and I, it's an absolutely beautiful gesture and I will certainly be supporting it. I'm just curious. I noticed that the request came in through an email. I don't think we have a policy or around these applications. So I'm just wondering, is that something that we should flag for going forward? I mean, I think part of our governance review had pointed out that our policies and procedures should really be clear and concise. And I just didn't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe there is an application process, but I couldn't find one anywhere. So, thank you.
Counsel Twill.
That's a, that's a good point. I, I don't believe we do have a policy, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think what we looked at as a committee, we looked at the merits of the requests that come in. We, we all recognize and appreciate all the good work that Rotary, Rotary Club does for our, for our community, for our city. And we thought this was more than a nice gesture, it was timely. And we wanted to, we wanted to immediately make a recommendation to city council to approve this. And I, I don't disagree with you. Moving forward, we'll certainly look to ensure that we do have the policies and procedures in place. But we didn't want to delay it. We wanted to move forward. Again, a real tribute to the Rotary Club of Charlottetown and all the good work that they're doing. And hopefully, you know, other projects will be forthcoming as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Promoting peace is always a good gesture. Question called?
Question's called, sir.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Okay. That's it, Counsel Twill. Okay, next report is Water and Wastewater Utility. Counsel Dron and Mr. McEwen. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on August 17. I don't have any resolutions for your consideration, but the manager was kind enough to give me a bit of an update, a couple of sentences here, that the utility is, is completing hurricane preparation efforts, including checking their backup generators and fuel tanks. It's hurricane season and he's just being proactive. We have reviewed our emergency planning checklist and will complete it later this week as we learn more about the potential impacts associated with upcoming hurricanes. Checklist items include fueling all vehicles and portable gas containers, flashlights, batteries, making sure sandbags, and ensuring all items in the yard are secured. Emergency food is available, employers are advised of their roles, and the report to duty times. It's just a plan that, you know, all the city corporations should look at. I, I know our manager is making sure our, our staff at Water and Sewer are well-prepared and I thank him for this. And if anybody has any questions about our report or any questions about anything, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. Great report. Richard, great job. Always good to see the staff's doing well. Counsel McCabe? No, you can't call yet, Richard.
I think we should put those recommendations out in comms. That's what I'm looking for, those specific reminders of what people could be doing to reduce the anxiety. Thank you.
Public Works, Counsel McCabe?
Yep, we met August 15th, again on August 24th with the draft minutes included in your package. Beach Grove Road is now substantially complete, substantially complete. I'll let the managers indicate if there's questions what's not, but I think traffic's flowing good. Staff are currently working out a plan to begin moving the Park and Rec Water and Sewer field staff to the new Bradley Point Road facility. It's expected that that move will happen by the end of September. Staff and our consultant engineer are working to finalize the draft report for the North River Road master traffic plan, and they have tentatively scheduled an open house for the end of October to present the findings to the public. More details will come on the meeting through our comms team. Just a reminder for people that are listening still at this time of night that the public meeting for Public Works is different than a public meeting for planning. The staff will be here, they'll kind of have plans presented and residents and the community can have a chance to come in and ask questions. But it's not a formal presentation where, where the consultants stand up and present a formal plan. So I just wanted to clarify the difference between, it's a different requirement. Anyway, we have one resolution. Any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for your report, Counselor McCabe. As you know, that I've been, the residents of Seaview Boulevard, you probably knew this was coming. I just got the word Thursday that it's on hold now because there's only one bid come in and there's over budget. Seaview Boulevard, we did a lot of legwork. We talked to the residents in the spring. They, talked to them about the program, about what was always going to be done between sewer and water that they're having issues with. And then Public Works was gonna go in and do it all over, take the Boulevard out. Some residents were not pleased at the time, but then once our staff went out there, or your staff, explained it to them, they thought it was a great idea. They're gonna move the trees from the Boulevard to the sides, things along that line. I get a phone call or an email Thursday from a resident and I check with the staff downstairs that it's gonna be on hold because of budget. It's a safety issue because if you, all of a sudden, every street has some people, some people might park in front of their houses just to run in or out. You can't get an emergency vehicle up or down either side of Seaview Boulevard. And that'll be an ambulance or a fire truck or anything because there's, you can barely get another car going up that street. And all of a sudden, we can find money for certain other places, you know, and for paths or for walkways or things along that line. Then at the 24th hour, this is pulled off the sheet where it was supposed to be on one of the top priorities because you and I discussed this a couple of times. And then they moved some from 25 that wasn't supposed to start the next year up and they're being done. I just, I'm just flabbergasted by the whole thing that after all, all the presentations to the residents and to me and things along that line, that it's off the charts. It's, it's all of a sudden, oh no, we can't afford it this year. So either it's poor budgeting or something happened here. But the, the whole project was supposed to be split between sewer and water and Public Works. And I know we're all watching our budget items and things along that line, but really, people, active transportation trails, as I stated years ago, we, we might have to put a hole on them to do the residential streets. That people, as Counsel Twill keeps saying, people lived in these homes for 50, 60 years. Now all of a sudden, they have a chance to get their streets done and their sewer and water upgraded that's 100 years old and it's pulled here on Thursday? Like, it's ridiculous as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I don't think it's pulled. It hasn't come to committee yet. The report hasn't come to committee. I think that the, I did follow up today. I had a few calls from your residents as well. There was a tender issue. There was an over budget tender. I'm not sure. We're waiting for the final report to come. I do know it is a priority for both Public Works and Water and Sewer. That was confirmed to me today. So I don't think your project's pulled. I think they're just looking alternative. Scott, maybe you want to explain a little more than that, but we haven't heard it as a committee yet because it hasn't come through committee yet.
Mr. Adams?
Your worship, so as Counselor McCabe indicated, so we haven't completed our report, haven't completed our evaluation of the tender yet at this moment. Yes, we know it came in over budget, but again, we have not made a recommendation to committee, which is how the process follows. And that will be coming at the next committee meeting, which is this month. So that will be when our, our staff will make the final recommendation to committee. And then at that point in time, committee can make the, can either, can make the final decision on how we move forward with the project.
Counsel Ramsey?
What I'm hearing from you is, but is not getting, is it not getting laid in the year to start a major project like that?
Your worship, so in the, which will come in the report, in the package that, from the one bid that we received, they said they weren't even starting until next year. So that's also another issue that needs to be discussed at committee. So again, once the report is completed, we'll bring it to committee. And committee will be able to discuss that and bring that forward to council for final
Thank you. And thank you for that, Scott. But it's just that, it just blew my mind how they, how we did all this research first and we met with residents and we put out the letter to the residents, we showed them the plans and the whole thing. They all got on board and this is in the spring of the year. And all of a sudden, like, did we miss a step here all of a sudden by saying, well, it's not being done because the RFP's never went out yet? I, I, I don't know. I gotta have answers for residents too. Thank you. And I thank you for your explanation, Scott.
Okay. Counsel Beck?
Yeah, thank you for your report, Counselor McCabe. I just had a question, page 118 there, when Joey, I assume that's, someone was talking, Joey McKinnon, maybe I'm not sure. I was talking about vehicles and the tendering process that was going on. And we did not receive any submissions for the two and a half, two and a half ton and 4,500 trucks. In the time I've been here, I've noticed that we've had different times where we've had, you know, one submission come in or there was no submissions come in, that sort of thing. I guess I'm wondering, is there any, or do we do any sort of joint tendering with either other municipalities? Or do we do any joint tendering with the province to sort of tie in to see if there's any kind of economies of scale that could be achieved through a joint tendering process? Like, I know we have machinery, trucks, vehicles, whatever, that we know that are coming towards their end of useful life. Maybe if we have kind of a, an ongoing sort of look at that and say, okay, right now we're good for the next six months on these particular vehicles or this particular machinery. But maybe there, there might come a time where we know that further on down the road, we may have to do some sort of ordering or tendering on it. And other municipalities or other jurisdictions may be in the same boat. And I'm just kind of wondering if that might be an opportunity for us to look at working with them, if we can all kind of predict a little bit where we may be going with some of those things. And, you know, if you start about savings on particular machineries, that starts to add up over the course of time. And it's just maybe a question or a suggestion to look at that. If we are doing it, great. And if we're not doing it, maybe it might be something we might want to be looking at. But. But anyway, just a comment and a question at the same time.
Council, Council McCabe?
That would fall under to our finance committee that are now looking at our procurement bylaw. I believe that they're going to be looking at the tendering process and things, so we're waiting, we're hoping at the end of this month, I believe in finance, Council McLeir was in that when they thought maybe they'd be ready to come to finance committee with a new bylaw around that. So our tender process falls to the finance committee, and it's under one procurement, and I know that they're doing some work on that right now, so hopefully some of those things will be considered in that process. Thank you.
Deputy Mary Ankauf?
Thank you, your worship, through to Councilor McCabe. I'm wondering if perhaps you could put on your next agenda item, unless it's something that could be addressed this evening. I've heard a lot of people with a lot of questions when it comes to the new road that will be going through the events grounds in conjunction with the, with the, what's that?
Eastern Gateway.
Eastern Gateway. And I'm wondering, is there an opportunity or a missed opportunity that we shouldn't be having, like, an open house to inform everybody? Because there's a lot of people that don't realize that there's areas in that area that are no longer, you're going to drive this way or that way, and I just think it goes a long way if we just inform the public a little bit of the good things that are happening. Thank you.
Council McCabe?
Yep, the Eastern Gateway project started back in 2011, was it, Scott?
Yeah, endorsed by council.
So I think a lot of the public consultation and things that have happened, happened initially when those plans and stuff were coming together. I know that the provinces now, there was a roundabout plan at one point, but now they're looking at a displaced intersection. There's changes probably to what that public consultation happened. Is that something we, I agree, I think the more we can educate and communicate about the good things that are happening, but Scott, I'm going to let you handle that. We can never do too much communication in this city.
Chief Engineer?
Your worship, so we, this is something that has been discussed before. We've been waiting for the province to be ready to present their plan to the public as well, and once that plan is ready to go, we want to do a bit of a joint potentially, so we should show both how our work will integrate well with their final plan. So they're working on that right now, and I actually have a meeting this week with the chief engineer of the province, and it's definitely something that we'll be discussing as part of the Eastern Gateway.
Okay, Council Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. Maybe it was a good time to ask, I kind of wondered, as part of that Eastern Gateway project, they're supposed to close off Water Street, and then make a beach. I'm just wondering what happens with the oil pipeline? And who will be looking after that? I've never heard that discussion of who's going to be removing that pipeline that takes the oil from the tanker to the tanks. It'd be nice if somebody looked into that, find out.
Council McCabe?
I'm going to have to defer that one to the manager.
Okay. Chief Engineer?
Your worship, so that's been a question that's come up in the past, so that property along there is still owned, where the pipeline is, by the Harbor Authority. They, I believe, own that pipeline, and Urban Oil uses it to move their oil to their tankyard. That will remain in place, but there are discussions around what we could do around that area. Again, there's some bigger plans out there that CADC are currently working on, on how to reimagine the event grounds so that it's a multi-use park versus just a large grass space as it currently is now. Some of the ideas have come up, again, there's been no final decision, but there's been ideas thrown around, you know, a suspended boardwalk that straddles it so that it's hidden, but people can still enjoy the area and use a boardwalk around it. So that's one of the ideas around it, to hide the, hide the, the oil line, but it will remain in place as it's still needed for transporting the oil from the, from the, where the boats come in to the tankyard.
Just can I, Council, Council Twill's been waiting, Council Twill? And then you can come back to your question there, Council Bernard. Go ahead, Council Twill.
Thank you. A couple of points I'd like to raise. One is Allen Street, as you know, Scott, two or three years ago, I raised the issue of Allen Street, particularly the north side of Allen Street. It's unsafe, there's no sidewalks, there's no active transportation pathway. Allen Street, I would argue, is probably the third busiest street in the city of Charlottetown. East-west connector to Queen Elizabeth Hospital, Charlottetown Driving Park, Eastlake Center. Many, many people in our city use that to get to St. Peter's Road so they can drive to Morrell, Suri, maybe Stratford, whatever the case may be. So I think Allen Street, I would put forth, needs a major overhaul, a plan to make it safe, safe for cyclists, people with disabilities. I know there's a sidewalk on the south side, but on the north side, it's extremely dangerous. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and I know you're aware of it. I know three years ago, when we, when we discussed it, and I think we need to move the envelope on that particular issue. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the second issue I wanted to bring up is, you know, we talked about needles here tonight and paraphernalia and garbage that our city staff has to pick up throughout the city of Charlottetown. You know, this is a new phenomenon for our city, and I don't think our, our workers, our workers have signed up for this. You know, it's not part of their job description to be doing this on a daily basis. So what I'd like, Scott, maybe in conjunction with yourself and other, I'm sorry, through you. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a cost estimate, cost estimate of how much money, you know, services of kind that we're putting out, city of Charlottetown is putting out, picking up all this garbage and debris, needles on a daily basis. And I think, I think once we get that bill, you know, we didn't bring this on, city of Charlottetown didn't bring it on, and I think, you know, it's a result of drug paraphernalia, for example, it's being distributed throughout the city of Charlottetown. I think we get the bill and we send it down to the provincial government. There are funding projects of this nature, and I think we get that bill and we send it right down to the premier's office. They can pay for NGOs, they can pay for the work that our, our workers do.
Okay. Question to them, Councilor?
Those are the two points.
Thank you, Council McCabe.
Yeah, I think there were more comments versus questions.
Well, there are questions too.
For further discussion at committee, which Council Twill sits on, we can add those to future agendas.
Okay, good point. Okay. Council Bernard?
Follow-up from the manager, there's response, I'll go through the chair. I'm just wondering, and I've always been under the impression this is mostly a provincial project? Is that correct, the gateway to Charlottetown?
The gateway is a joint city, and so the roadway that we're working on is our city right away, so it's our project, and then the provincial government will be doing their work portion of Grafton Street and Riverside Drive.
Okay, but maybe I could talk to you a bit later, but I'm just wondering, when that plan was presented, excuse me, it didn't have any pipeline or anything that was sand right down the water?
Mm-hmm.
And I think a lot of people are looking forward to having the views, and now I'm hearing that they're going to be building something over the pipe. It will create more blockages in the water since they put that second guardrail up. So will that at some point come back to council here before work starts? Or is it all, is it all in the queue now?
What I understand, I think the plans are, unless, I don't think there was any further discussion that was supposed to come back, but you can clarify that, I mean, it's all fancy.
So that portion of the work that you're referring to in terms of the pipeline would not be city work at this time. It would be administered by CADC as they own the land around that. So I don't believe it would come back to, we presented it as an information piece, but at the end of the day, it would be a CADC-led project, and they would be the ones administering the final design down there.
Nope.
It could come up quite, it could come up quite a bit in the official.
No, no, that's two times, I'm just trying to move here. Council Twill, do your mics on or you shut it off there? Just before you go on there, that pipeline was there because Urban, Urban would unload their fuel out on the dock in the middle of Harbor, and then it was transferred down to, transferred to their, to their, to their storage tanks. So the pipeline was there, but not across from where you're talking about right now. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think when the, when the plan was sold, I think a lot of people expected the pipeline to be buried or moved.
Right.
And it'd be all water view, and there's going to be access rates to the water. And I think now, and I've come up at some of the official meetings that we've had over the official plan, it brought up, a couple of people had talked about that also, is that closing that road and leaving that pipeline there doesn't really serve the purpose of what the intended plan was. So I hope there's some opportunity to further discuss that.
I think this kind of ties into what Council, Deputy Mary Ankauf wants, is maybe we do need to look at an updated public meeting with the changes and stuff that have happened, and Scott, maybe we can make, make something like that happen so people that are interested and invested have an opportunity to hear what the new plan looks like.
Good idea, yeah, thank you.
Okay. You have a resolution? Do we, Council?
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Councilor McLeir. Be it resolved that council endorsed the Canada Community Building Fund Municipal Strategic Component application to complete hydraulic modeling in Charlottetown and commit to a maximum of $300,672 if CBF MSC funding is secured, and that if the application is successful, the city's contribution be incurred over two years, two fiscal years, beginning in the 2023-2024 fiscal and ending in the 2024-2025 fiscal year. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Council Dron?
Mayor Brown, I'm just wondering, can someone explain this? Is it just the, the water flow around a certain area downtown? Could someone answer that?
Okay.
I've read it a number of times and still can't get the whole.
Council McCabe?
When I read this, I, the city lacks critical data on the state of the municipal stormwater system in Charlottetown. So the only exception to this are where we know, and they're working on those bigger projects within the city. So when I read this, Council Dron, I think this is kind of a study to go and look where we are. Would that be correct, Scott, where there is issues within the city with our infrastructure and with things to give us a little bit more information?
Your worship, so what it is, is an exercise similar to what we did with Eastern Gateway, where it is a ground truthing exercise, was essentially hiring consultant to go through, pop catch basins, check catch basins out, look at pipes, sizes, condition, and check for flows. And they take all this information and develop hydraulic models for us, which helps us better predict and understand how our stormwater system in essentially the core of Charlottetown. So I believe staff have picked from essentially Belvedere South all the way down to the water to have that entire area ground truth so that we can better understand how our stormwater flows through our underground infrastructure system here in the city.
Right, it looks at everything, right? And it's only, it's right there where how much is in the budget and then how much we'll have to contribute depending on what funding we're approved for. So it's kind of a win-win.
Council Dron, you want to go up for a second?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, and I understand, that's, that's, I guess, when you explain it that way, but is there any appetite, once this is completed, to go out, out to the other wards, like, to get a whole city look? I know I keep bringing up Shamrock, they don't have any, you know, stormwater management or ditches or anything, the water's just kind of overflowing their yards. So I'm just wondering, okay, you approve this, but is there any appetite, are we going to do the whole city eventually?
Council McCabe, do you want to defer that to the engineer? Yeah?
Your worship, so again, this is more data collection so that we have an understanding of what our current system is today. That's solely, it's to be able to have that model so that as we do further projects such as improve drainage in certain areas, we have a better understanding what system's already in place, what it can handle, and then we can further calculate how much more capacity the system has if we add more water to it. And it helps us identify, do we have to expand that network, reroute that water? It allows us to be better able to mitigate or fix our summer water issues around the city. So it's to get that base model so that we can expand on it and build on it.
Council Twill?
Just last week, I think the first day of school, the crossing guard at Queen.
Is this on the resolution? We're still, we're still discussing the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, yeah. Now this, okay, question called?
Questions called.
Questions called, great. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay. Okay. Economic Development, Tourism. Councilor Trevor McKinnon, Ward Eight.
Thank you, your worship. Economic Tourism Cultural Development Committee did not meet since our last meeting. The Arts Advisory Board met on August 14th and minutes are included in your package. There's no resolutions for consideration, however, the manager drafted up a few points here of activities that have been taking place. The acting manager, Wayne Long, is currently in British Columbia, participating in the Destination Canada's Federal Government Innovate Canada International Economic Mission. That's quite a title. If members of council have any questions this evening, I'll take them under advisement if I'm not able to answer them. Invest in Canada recently met with Mayor Brown, acting manager Wayne Long, and Brad Mix with Innovation PEI. Invest in Canada works directly with global businesses to help them expand into Canada through foreign direct investment. Organization is conducting a national tour with key stakeholders and municipalities with a focus on one, on in-person discussions with partners to discuss investment, attraction, and value proposition. The 13th Annual Bob Bateman Mayor's Cup Memorial Golf Tournament, in support of Stars for Life Foundation for Autism, was held on this past Friday, and special thanks to all city staff and elected officials who took part and helped make the day a huge success. Stars for Life is still tallying fundraising totals, which will be communicated back to the city soon. Port Charlottetown is in a flurry of activity with the busy fall cruise season now upon us. We've welcomed 10 ships already in September with 57 port calls remaining, and four three-day ships coming up, with the first to take place this Wednesday. The summer event season in the city was incredibly vibrant with highly successful additions of Art in the Open, Grand Fondo PEI, Cinema Under the Stars being held over the last couple of weeks. Things have been very busy on the sport tourism front, playing host to the month to the U17 and U19 Men's Field Lacrosse National Championship, Atlantic Lawn Bowling Championships as well. The fall signature event schedule shows no sign of slowing down with the PEI International Shellfish Festival going on this upcoming weekend, the inaugural Moonlight Bazaar, Charlottetown Scarecrow Festival, Firm Day in the City, Street Feast, PEI Fall Flavors Festival, PEI Film Festival, and the PEI Marathon scheduled to take place over the next month. To celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Royal Canadian Naval Reserves, the sailors of the HMCS Queen Charlotte will be exercising their freedom of the city on September 23rd at 11:00 a.m. Members of the public are invited to attend, and all of council will be asked to participate in the ceremony. Further details in the coming days. Lastly, staff and the Arts Advisory Board are planning for the 2023 Charlottetown Arts and Cultural Awards, which will take place on October 25th. If there's any questions that I can answer, I will, if not, I'll take them under advisement from Mr. Wong.
Just a quick follow-up there, Council McKinnon, for the Freedom of the City Ceremony, there will be a special meeting of council to adopt a proclamation, so you're asked to be present for that special meeting. It'll be a very short meeting, and then there's a ceremonial, and I think Council Bernard, you remember Council Twill back 2010, they went through this process where they come to the door, bang three times on the front door, and we go down and read the proclamation. So there will be a notice going out from Tracy on that special meeting. It won't be that long, but there will be a reception here in city chambers for the Naval Reserve to celebrate that freedom of the city. So I really encourage us to, encourage our council to be here. It'll be very short, and I think it'd be very honored to recognize the 100th anniversary of the Queen Charlotte, Queen Charlotte Armory's Naval Reserve Centennial. Council Dron?
Yeah, is that when they marched down the city and come to the door?
Yes.
I think we had that just a few years ago.
You had it in 2018.
Okay.
But this is, this is a But this is a ceremonial...
Door.
Just again, to celebrate the 100th anniversary. And they requested a proclamation be passed by council.
Okay.
That's why the meeting will be held that Saturday morning, the 23rd.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank you for that. I just had one question, councillor McKinnon, just on the, it's great to see the tents for the Fish Festival coming up. It's great to see the events ground being used. Just wondering if anything is on the agenda for the East Link Centre or the events ground? Is there any concerts, bands, balloon raising, anything coming? I'm just wondering if you could answer that. Thanks.
Councillor McKinnon.
Thank you for your question, councillor Dron. I'm not sure what a balloon raising is, but staff are working on events for next summer. There will be a list coming out shortly of events that's going to be taking place at the events grounds for next summer. So more information to come.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it? Again, a big thanks to the councillors that showed up for the Stars for Life tournament. I think they had 31 teams. Great fundraiser for the Stars for Life. Thank you again. Okay. Environment Sustainability. Thank you, councillor McKinnon. Councillor Bernard.
Environment Sustainability Committee met August 21st, your worship. The minutes are in your package. I'll answer any questions if I can. As I said when the meeting started, we had another meeting in August 28th where our resolutions for environment sustainability get debated and passed. All the minutes in here reflect that. So if there's any other questions that I can answer, I'll do my best. Thank you, your worship.
Councillor Dron and councillor Twill.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you councillor Bernard. As discussed the last time, we were talking about the stump program. I know I'm a member of the committee, and it was kind of a moving document, you know, when we looked at it, that, you know, if, last month, we said if someone came in with a picture of their stump and an invoice, then maybe we could go back and look at reimbursement under the program. I know I had a couple of residents call me and ask about it, and staff rightly said, you know, you don't qualify because the program started now. You know, I'm here to say or ask if we can expand that program to do what we thought, you know, which I thought, if you had a picture of a huge stump and you had an invoice, then maybe our program could help you, even though it was a month or two or maybe three ago. You know, residents, you know, had to get the stumps out, you know, especially if it was in the front yard, and get it out of there and move on as we kind of, you know, we were waiting for help with the province that never came. So now when we start the program and the residents are saying, listen, I have my pictures, I have my invoices, is there any way to help? And we say no, because it started now. Is there any room that we can kind of move that date back a few months, you know, with our manager or council's permission to expand that? I just feel that, you know, the residents waited, they couldn't wait so long, and we have a program. And I'll give our management credit for doing that. We finally pulled the plug, but now some residents are not being able to be helped. And I'm just wondering if we can expand that. Thanks.
Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, councillor. And when I read the past minutes, I think that you guys discussed that on August 28th, correct?
Yes.
And there was a vote held?
Yeah.
And it passed 7-2?
That's right.
To go the way the...
Seven-two vote.
Yeah, seven-two to go the way the...
The new minutes.
Stump removal program was outlined by the staff.
Right.
So you, so what are you asking me to do? Because it was already voted on, so what are you asking me to do?
Well, yeah. What I'm asking is if we can expand it to help the residents that took stumps out and had pitchers in inventory, you know, had a bill stating that I had to pay five or six or seven or $800 or $1,000 back in June or July. So that's what I'm asking, is to expand that program now, just to help. Like, has it been so many people? Have the staff been overwhelmed by so many responses? I don't know if, you know, if that plays a factor in it, but I, you know, when people are looking for help, that they've done the work that they didn't think was coming and now find out that we're helping people move forward, I'm just looking to see if we can look at that to move back.
Councillor Bernard.
Well, we could always relook at things. I mean, right now, I think council voted on it 7-2. So I think personally, my opinion would be, we'll see how the money goes, see what's left. We have $250,000 to work with. We were hoping that the province would match those funds. They haven't. They haven't yet. So I think my response would be that council has spoke 7-2. We'll see how the money goes, see if there's still money left over, councillor Dron, we can revisit that. I think one of the issues was staff found it, from what I could see in the minutes, very difficult to be able to verify, I guess, someone's got the stump removed. So I think that was one of the challenges, from what I can understand here, is the stump size would be challenging to verify, and if they actually got it done or if somebody else's bill. We can talk about that, see if there's ways around it. But I think right now, council has spoken, so we're going to move ahead with the program. And as the program moves through, we'll see how, what the uptake's like, see what the money's like. We can always revisit it.
Councillor Dron, if you were just on the digital copy, I know if you go back to the minutes, it's page 16 in our digital copy. It says, "An amendment was moved by councillor Twill and seconded by councillor Dron that the residents be permitted to submit invoices to be reimbursed for stump removal that has already been completed by a contractor. A vote was taken, and it was defeated 7-2 with councillors Dron and Twill in favor of that deferral or change. A vote was taken on the original resolution, as noted above, and the original resolution was to go ahead with the private stump removal rebate. That vote was eight to one. The only councillor opposed to it was councillor McCabe." That's in the minutes. That's how, that's how the meeting unfolded that night. It's on page 16 of the, and it would be on page, if you go back to your September 20, August 28th minutes, it's on page three.
Yeah, that's where I've seen it.
Yeah, but you have to read the background. Okay. Any resolutions? No.
No, they're passed out.
Okay. Councillor Beck. Oh, but I can't, it keeps going on and off. Councillor Twill, just put yours on.
Thank you for your report. I received a call the other day from a resident that wanted to know about the switch program. As you know, the switch program has been very successful, and wanted to know if our switch program, and if it's going to be extended for this year. They'd like to participate in the program again. I said I'll try to find out. They're very pleased with what they've experienced in the first year of the program, and would like to see the program continue.
Councillor Bernard.
That's going to depend on where the funding will come from. Right now, to get other funding from... What was the name of the group that had the funding?
PACE.
Yeah, but PACE ended up getting from the federal government. But anyway, the federal government is saying for it...
FCM, Federation Canadian Municipalities.
Yeah. So what we've been told is in order to get, in order to get a refill of that funding, we have to show where we're going to continue the funding into the future. That's a budget issue, and it'll be something that we'll be bringing up in the upcoming budget discussions. So...
So it's a possibility?
Oh, yeah, it's a possibility. Yep. It's been a very good program.
Councillor Beck.
I, sorry councillor Bernard, but I just, and thank you for your report. I had asked this question of Jessica Corkum-Gorle, our environmental and sustainability person, but she was unable to answer it because, or she answered my email, but I had another question, and I couldn't get a hold of her before here tonight, so maybe I'll ask it of you. The stump removal program applies primarily to front lawns, right? And then if it goes in the backyard, it has to be kind of a safety-related issue, right? So I had a request from a resident about actually looking to support a neighbor who needed some support in terms of figuring out what to do. And the question centered around removal of the stump. And Jessica alluded to me that they would go ahead, remove the stump, and then submit the paperwork in for a rebate after the fact. But if it's not applicable or eligible for funding, they may, that may preclude them from doing the works. Like it may, I don't know what, whether they would do it or not. So does there, is there some kind of assessment that has to be done by our staff? Do they have to go out and say, if it's not a front yard and if it doesn't meet those diameters, I think whatever the diameter of the stump? Do we have to send out someone like from our, from our staff to go do the assessment first and then determine whether it would be applicable for funding or eligible for funding at that time? That would seem to me to make sense, because I think you have to make, ascertain whether it is actually something that would fit the criteria that has been outlined. I think it's a little more straight, straightforward on the front lawn. The backyard seems to be a little bit of a gray area, I think, in terms of saying, can we, is it eligible? Does it fit? Will they go and get a contractor to come in and remove it? So I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering. There might be other people who would have the same situation faced with other residents as well. So could you clarify that for me?
Yeah. So councillor Beck, it's an application process. It's just gone live this week. So anybody that's looking for that rebate would have to apply through the application process. In that application, and that's online, charlottetown.ca/stump. So they would get the application, they would fill it out. The contractor would confirm the size to make sure it's at least 30 centimeters. Contractor would confirm that in the application. And then...
When they go to do the work?
Yes. Yeah. So if it passes all that criteria, then our staff would approve it. Now, the backyards, they're trying to get the front yards cleaned up first, but the backyard is more, if it's more of a hazard, I would suggest that if the stump's halfway out, the roots are sticking up and so on, that that's something that we would definitely look at. If it's just a stump in the ground and it's only up, you know, three, four inches, that's probably not something they would look at. So that's what they're looking at, is the ones in the backyards, that would be a hazard or a danger. Makes sense?
Councillor Beck.
And that's what, that's what this case is. It's not a clean-cut stump that's sitting there looking for removal. It's more of an uprooted tree with big stump that the dangerous hazard. And I guess I just, I think that would, that would make more sense, that we go ahead and make the determination first that yes, this fits the criteria, we can do it, we'll go ahead, go get an operator, submit the forms afterwards and get the rebate sort of thing.
Yeah, I would recommend they would, they fill out the application first and then forward it. That's what I would recommend.
So still go through the same process?
Yep.
But what if they're not eligible?
Well, then it's up to them what they want to do with it.
But who makes the determination whether they're eligible or not?
Staff.
Because what I'm understanding from Jessica is that you have to go in, get the stump removed, submit the application form to get the rebate after the fact. What she, what this person is trying to determine is the work that they are doing, is that eligible for a potential rebate? And that may determine the next steps. So it's a little bit different than just a straight stump out in the front of the house where you come along, say, yeah, meets the diameters, we can go ahead, get the contractor to come in, submit the paperwork, and away you go. Think this is a little bit different. I guess I'm really in this situation, trying to ascertain whether the work that is being done in the backyard, not in the front yard, is going to potentially be eligible for work. There's financial implications with this that may determine what the next steps might be. So I guess that's kind of where I'm hoping that maybe we could get some help from our technicians. I know technically, we don't go onto private property to make those determinations. But I think this might be one of these things, if we have the program like this, there may be one-offs where we may have to look and say, yeah, you fit here or it does not fit. And then let the resident decide what it is that they want to do after that.
Okay.
That's just my point.
Thank you.
Could I just interrupt for one minute? The director just found the policy?
Yeah.
Could you just read that part?
Yeah, please do. I was looking for the binder here.
Yeah, I was looking for...
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just read to, this is, this is CAO Eleanor, she just found it on the, is this on the website?
Your worship, on our website, as it was just alluded to, the application is actually on there to the point of the chair. The terms and conditions are set out in the application form that you see online. It says right at the beginning that applying does not guarantee a rebate. So rebates are issued on a first-come, first-served basis and are subject to funding limits. To your point around not knowing whether their, their work might actually be eligible at the end of the day, there's, there's, there's no, I can't confirm that at this point. We'll certainly take that under advisement as far as trying to give people good advice when they're applying as to what is likely to be covered. Because if they do proceed with their, with the contractor, there's no guarantees that they're going to get a rebate, and that is articulated in the application form.
Yeah, and there's still more criteria there, though. Did you read the criteria?
Oh, yes, the criteria are all listed out. To be eligible for consideration for a rebate, you must be the registered owner of a single-family residential duplex or triplex property within the city. Rental properties and businesses are not eligible. The rebate is available only to existing homes, not homes in the planning stages currently under construction or vacant land. Only one rebate can be requested per household. Front yard stumps are eligible or backyard and side yard if a hazard. Stumps must be 30 centimeters or greater in diameter, and you must submit your application and invoice for work via licensed business. That's the listing of all the criteria.
That's pretty clear. And it's on the website?
So if they apply and they meet the criteria, they should, they should be eligible.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that good? And just the website, just charlottetown.ca/stump removal, right? Okay. That's easy. Who wants it extended? Okay, we need a vote. Yeah, I know. Thank you. Councillor Ramsay, you are correct. Tracy McLean was already... We need a motion to extend the meeting. Moved by councillor Matarret, seconded by councillor Ramsay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. So you can put that in the record there, Tracy. Another extension. Yeah. Bring in the coffee, the donuts. Okay. Okay, we can move on. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation, councillor Norman Beck, Ward Three.
All right. My tablet moved up here. Sorry about that, folks. All right. So the Strategic Priorities Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on August 24th, and the minutes are included in your package. There are no resolutions for your consideration. I do want to acknowledge the work that was done on the community survey results by Advenus. The results overall come in quite favorably in favor of the city and the work that's being done by our professional staff. So that was, I guess, confirming and nice to hear, but also, you know, kind of reinforces that we continue to try and provide the best services that we can. One other thing I do want to bring to your attention is on October 1st to 3rd, we are going to be hosting the Canadian Capital Cities of Canada Conference here in Charlottetown. So it's, I'm looking forward to that. I'll be the representative at that with some of the professional staff in here as well, too. So it's looking forward to that. Show off our beautiful city.
It's open to all of council?
I'm not su, I'm still, some of the finer details are still being worked out, but I...
Yeah, some of the meetings are...
I, I'm not quite sure how it works, so I don't want to speak out of turn, because some of it's still being kind of worked out. But any questions? If you have any questions, direct them to me, and I'll do my best to answer them for you. So that's coming up on October 1st to 3rd. Anyway, any questions? Feel free to throw them my way, and I'll do my best to answer them.
Deputy Mayor, and then councillor Twill.
Thank you councillor Beck and through his worship. I'm just wondering if we could put on the next... I'm just wondering if we could put on the next agenda maybe, um, a discussion and a report around the successes of the Charlestown Hall, um, website. I mean, I know the community survey was there and I know that the cultural policy survey is there, but it's supposed to be an engagement site and I'm seeing very little happening, um, since April. And just wondered if we could put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Beck?
Uh, duly noted.
Councillor Twill?
So effectiveness of charlottownhall.ca, sorry, is that what I just captured?
Dot com.
Thank you.
Town Hall. Councillor Twill?
Thank you for your report, councillor Beck. Uh, as you know, it was a couple of months ago, I made a request to, uh, have the committee look at the Municipal Government Act, uh, to do a comparative analysis of the Municipal Government Act compared to, uh, cities like Halifax, Moncton, Fredericton, to do a jurisdictional scan. Um, a lot of concerns with this Municipal Government Act over the last, you know, four or five years. Uh, I believe it's time to swing the pendulum back, uh, towards, uh, towards council when it comes to major decisions that are being made in the city's corporation. Uh, speaks to more accountability, more responsibility, and, uh, I'm not sure where you're at with that request I made, uh, just a few months ago. I know it's going to take a lot of work, but, uh, I think the time is right. Like I said back two or three months ago, the time is right for this council to look at the Municipal Government Act, the effectiveness of the act, um, to see what the responsibilities are currently and where we need to go as, uh, as an elected body. We are directly responsible to the taxpayers and to the, to the, to the electorate. Uh, I think it's, uh, like now more than ever, we need to, uh, look at what the powers are, divisions of powers, and maybe we, maybe we, maybe we shouldn't. I, I truly believe we should swing that pendulum back so that council can have a say in some of the major decisions that are being made in this corporation. Because right now, you know, we're, I'm at a loss, some of the things that, that are happening in the city's corporation, yet we, we don't seem to have a say, and I believe we should have a say. We did have a say when we amalgamated. I was part of that process. Was it perfect? No, but, uh, I can tell you what, ten councillors are much more involved, and we should be involved because ultimately we are responsible and accountable to the community. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Councillor Beck?
Yeah, uh, thank you for that councillor Twill, and, um, I, I did follow up. Uh, had cover, brief conversation with, uh, the mayor. I had a, a larger conversation with, um, CAO Eleanor, and part of, uh, it's not, hasn't been forgotten, I guess would be the, would be the short answer. Um, the other thing is we're waiting, um, as you're aware, we, we do have some up, up-staffing that we're doing. Um, uh, CAO Eleanor just sort of requested that we kind of wait until the dust settles a little bit on that, and then we can delve into it a little bit further on a more, on a more, uh, when we have our better headspace, I guess, around it, we can look at whatever issues that need to be identified. Um, I would also encourage you too, or anyone again, if you have, uh, concerns about the MGA, the structure, the powers that be, if you have anything in your own councillor Twill or anyone else here in the chamber, please forward them to me, and that can be part of, that can help shape our discussion as we go forward. But, um, short answer is haven't forgotten about it, uh, which, it's kind of on pause, and, uh, we will, it's on the agenda, it's on the, uh, to-do list, I guess, if you will, and, uh, we'll see. But again, again, if anyone has any concerns, issues, ideas you want addressed, uh, we're all ears. Thanks.
Okay, councillor MacLeir?
Thank you for your report, councillor Beck. Um, just going to lob something over there. Um, after, shortly after getting elected, um, had a conversation with a resident and, and said, uh, anyway, call me Johnny, he said, Johnny, he said, you realize, uh, what kind of world you're getting into with, uh, municipal politics? He said, you know how it goes. He said, um, the feds, uh, feds have the money, province have the jurisdiction, and the municipalities have the problems. And, um, I, uh, when I think about kind of what's going on with, you know, the, the challenges with the outreach center and drug overdose prevention sites and police and all that, and I'm thinking, wow, that's kind of, you know, that kind of resonated. Anyway, I just wonder, you know, at, uh, at your committee, has there ever been conversation or thoughts, um, in terms of, uh, you know? I've also had conversations, like many of you councillors have had, I'm sure, with, with residents and stakeholders around, you know, this ish, this, these challenges with, uh, you know, the outreach center, overdose prevention sites and that whole, that whole, um, milieu. And, um, I'm, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, and also having conversation with residents, I just, you know, the, the, um, the rapport and the back and forth between the provinces and the feds and the municipality, uh, is there, um, would there be, uh, an opportunity for perhaps, uh, for us to look at that lens to see if there, if there are ways that, uh, we might be able to, um, be part of being a catalyst, uh, to, um, to bridge that gap? Uh, and I know we have something right, right on top of us, and, uh, it's maybe late to be trying to get out ahead of that, but, uh, just in kind of going forward, or, or if this can be a part of, uh, uh, part of how council, uh, you know, approaches, uh, our relationships and interactions with the, uh, with the, with the province and, you know, uh, and the feds, I just think it'd be, be critical to, uh, anything we can do to build up a trust factor and a common purpose, uh, would be, um, I think would, uh, take some value to maybe some long-term solutions. Thank you.
Councillor Beck?
Yeah, that's a great point councillor MacLeir, and, um, you know, I, I think there's, I think that communication piece, the dialogue piece, the, the openness piece, uh, is, is very important, especially when we're, I, I think frankness and, you know, wholesome discussions are beneficial in all kinds, regardless of how difficult or, uh, uncomfortable they might be at certain times. But, uh, um, I certainly don't mind having difficult conversations or uncomfortable conversations if they have to happen. Um, and I, I think in my discussions that I've had with our CAO, I don't think she has any issues with me in having difficult conversations either. But, so, uh, it, it's a valid point, uh, absolutely. And, uh, I think kind of tying in with what councillor Twill was saying, if we're looking at moving forward and making any kind of changes, I think having those honest and open conversations is a part of, of doing that, and, uh, um, I, I think it's a valid point and certainly be taken under advisement. Thanks.
Okay, good, good. Got a great website there for the Canadian Capital Cities Organization. Says, October first is the welcome reception. The penthouse, the hotel, Grand Hotel, Home and Grand, seven PM. Are we invited? Okay, thank you councillor Beck, thank you very much. Councillor John MacLeir, Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration. Betty French is still here, holding on. Do you want to take the mic there too, Betty? Okay, John?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just, uh, lost by-
Page one seventy. Page one seventy.
Yeah, the Finance Audit and Tendering Committee met on, um-
September sixth.
September, uh, September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, included in your package are the draft minutes from the meeting, there's one resolution for your consideration. Um, there's also, um, a monthly financial statement in there, uh, up to July thirty-first of, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, that, uh, Betty French and her team have, have prepared for your, uh, for your review. There's, um, there's also, um, tenders in there, uh, information on RFPs and RFQs for, uh, for the open, open tender process, what's been completed and what's still outstanding. And, yes, and also, um, under the, uh, under the minutes of, uh, under the September sixth, the two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Finance Committee, uh, I know there was, uh, lots of discussion this evening around, um, uh, policing and, uh, the challenges that they're, that they're dealing with. And, um, at that, um, at our committee meeting, uh, Mayor Brown, um, as it's notes in the minutes, uh, put a notice in a motion, uh, notice of motion to look for funding for six additional police officers after the public meeting that was held Tuesday with the Charlestown Police Department at Burt'swood Elementary. And, um, as you all know as well, I guess, with the governance, uh, KPMG governance report, there's also, you know, recommendations in there for, you know, additional policing. So I think, um, Mayor Brown's intent was to, uh, was to put this, uh, put this, uh, notice of motion in advance to get, uh, to get, uh, certainly the Finance Committee and council and the rest of us thinking and coming into this budget process of, um, city police, you know, you know, is understaffed. And, um, so this would be, uh, this will be an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, further look at, at that and can the, uh, can we find money in the budget to, uh, to make that happen? Uh, and, uh, also, the, the, um, uh, there was a motion, uh, from CARRY, heard back from the CARRY board, uh, they, um, they had, uh, there's going to be some further debate, um, that, uh, I'm recommending that go, goes back to the committee. Uh, we heard back from the, uh, from the CARRY board on the, um, on the recommendation of, uh, we had passed a resolution here in council that, uh, for, uh, continued funding for, uh, fifteen thousand a year for, um, the seniors active living center. And, um, that, that, um, uh, for a twenty-year period. Uh, and, um, I since, uh, we since had some communication back on that. And, uh, from the, uh, from the, uh, I've been talking with the CARRY Chair, uh, Board Chair, and, um, that's probably, I'm going to recommend that that, uh, go back to, uh, back to our committee, Finance Committee for further discussion. Um, so that's, uh, that's all I have to say on-
And you got one resolution, right?
Pardon me?
Do you have a resolution also?
Oh, pardon me, yeah, is, there's one, uh, one resolution on, um, that's in your, uh, in your file for your consideration.
Okay, councillor Twill, you have a question? Thank you councillor MacLeir.
Um, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said earlier. I think it might have been under, uh, you know, resources. Uh, when we talk about adding more police officers, um, need to do an examine, examination of how many officers we do require from a regional, from a national perspective. And, uh, you know, you, you, you captured it well, which you said earlier, under Norman Beck's, uh, report. You know, the feds have the money, provinces have the jurisdiction, we have the problems. So, like, we're, we're talking about adding more police officers, which I'm strongly in favor of, but I really believe that the province has to come to the table. If you look at monies that, uh, you know, are funded towards a number of these non-for-profit organizations, um, you know, there's millions and millions of dollars. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I really think we got to push hard for it. And I think the province has to come to the table and, and, and provide funding on an annual basis for, uh, for, uh, new police officers, and I'm very serious about that. My second question, or second point I'd like to bring up, talk about the terms of agreement with CARRY. Uh, I recall a number of years ago, uh, in the terms of agreement, that city council voted on the naming rights for the CARRY facility, Bella Lion. I'm not sure how long that deal was for. And I'm, and I'm wondering if, if in fact the naming rights, which is, I believe, is a responsibility of this council, is that coming back to this council for a vote? Uh, was it, was, was there, was there, uh, you know, an agreement made with, with, with the company, the current company? Uh, did it go to tender? Uh, where is all of this? And, uh, did this come back to the city of Charlestown, or did it, did it come back to senior management? Or who did it come back to? I, I, I always, I was under the impression, I know I voted, voted on it before, so, uh, where, where is the, uh, naming rights proposal? Uh, was that brought to this council, or was it funded through your committee? Did it go to senior management? Where did it go? So, um-
He's going to answer that.
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to get that information and to see, get a status, uh, status report.
Councillor MacLeir?
Thank you councillor, councillor Twill, uh, those are, uh, uh, good questions for, for clarification. Um, I, um, I, uh, actually, um, failed to, uh, had, had a conversation with the, uh, chairman today, but, um, I, uh, I can't speak to the naming rights, uh, revenue piece. I'm going to defer maybe to, to Sue, Sue Fraser?
Sue Fraser?
To maybe give more, more of an answer, uh, on, on your question, councillor Twill?
Sue, can you just?
Your worship, normally I wouldn't, I would just take this under advisement because I don't conduct CARRY business anymore, but-
Okay.
I can't, I can't at least clarify though, that the last time this was before council, it was because it was an agreement that included the city of Charlestown in the agreement with Bella Lion because it, it was services in kind and funds that were going to the city. That's why the city voted on it last time around.
Just, just, uh, John, uh, councillor MacLeir, is that good enough?
Yeah, Mayor Brown, yeah. If councillor Twill was-
Councillor Twill, you want to clarify?
Probably not the definitive answer you're looking for, but, um, I'd be prepared to go back and see.
Well, yeah, take it back to your committee. Uh, I'd, I'd like to find out, I, I, I'm trying to understand what our director said. Like services kind of, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, to be honest with you.
No, councillor Twill, just, just, you, you recall it was two fourteen, I think, that this was voted on?
Yeah.
And because the city was part of that agreement, that's why it came back to the city? So are you asking, is the city part of this agreement?
Well, I think, I think logically we would be.
Oh, okay, that's-
Or did it change, who changed, if, if it changed, who changed?
Yeah, so that's what you're asking?
Yeah, and why wasn't it brought back to council? If there was going to be any changes or any amendments to the agreement, logic dictates to me that it would come back to council to vote.
Councillor?
Again councillor Twill, um, taking, um, taking your question, uh, we'll, um, uh, go back to, uh, back, back with staff and to, uh, to CARRY board and, um, get clarity for that, on that, and take it back.
Bring it back to the, back to council.
Break it back to council?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have a resolution that you want to forward, uh, councillor MacLeir? Our CAO is ready to read it?
Thank you, your worship. Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number One, moved by councillor MacLeir, seconded by councillor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the submission from HRX in the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars to carry out an equity, diversity and inclusion- in the amount of $3,400 to carry out an equity, diversity and inclusion training session with mayor and council. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Speak to it. Deputy Mary Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for your report, Counselor MacLair. Just two things on this. I think it's great that we're having this onboarding coming our way. I know when I listened to your meeting, there was an option of doing this virtually or in person. I just would like to put myself forward to say, I would much prefer to do this in person than virtually. I just heard that in the recording from the meeting. And the only other question I had is, was there no companies from PEI that apply for this training? And maybe I can't ask that, maybe it's not my business.
That's a good question.
Yeah, but I mean, the company is not anywhere from here. And I know of many organizations that do equity diversion and inclusive training here, right locally. Thanks. It did go to tender, yeah, that's why I was curious.
I'll defer that to Sue Fraser.
Thank you.
Your worship, through to Deputy Mayor. I was actively engaged in the request for quotes. And there were quotes received from within province as well as outside of the province. We did an evaluation exercise that you can see the template in your package and the scoring, how we weighted the scoring. Certainly, I appreciate your comments around the fact that we do have people locally. The quality of the presentation and the submission from the company that we're recommending was exemplary. And I did the rating along with another staff person, and we did our ratings separately, and we both came to the same conclusion with regards to the best presentation that came forward. I think, I appreciate that, you know, you try to go local whenever you possibly can. But this particular proposal was head and shoulders above the rest.
Okay. Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you for your report, Counselor MacLair. So where, I'm just trying to find where this company is from that's going to be doing this.
Sue?
Regrettably, I don't have their presentation right in front of me. So I don't have, I would have to, it would take me a couple of minutes to find that.
She has, the CAO has it.
Do you have it, Eleanor?
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. Vancouver.
HRX.
Worship, you just, so we're paying them $3,400 to do the onboarding. Are we paying their travel and the whole nine yards, or is that all?
It's virtual. It's online.
Okay, because I, like I thought the deputy mayor said that
No, she asked a question.
Oh, there is an option given?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if there was.
Virtual or in person?
Okay, thank you.
So the company, CAO Eleanor, is, I know the area code is 609, I think. 604, so is that Ontario? It's Vancouver, thank you. So it's
Is it to have it virtual versus, you know, for us to vote on this, is it more important to have someone here virtually? The minute you start paying for people to come in from Vancouver, it's a lot more than $3,400, although I'm sure they're very good. But I guess you have to decide what's more important, having the presentation in person? Or are you good with a virtual presentation for $3,400?
So CAO Eleanor or Director Sue Fraser, any comments?
All I can say, your worship, at this point is if the council's in consensus that they would rather this be in person, we're probably going to pull this resolution and go back because it's going to change clearly the cost to do this. And we'll have to reconsider based on pricing of all of our bidders for it to be in person.
Yeah. Yeah. Counselor Twill? Kate, just, Counselor Twill, just put your mic on, just get it on the public record.
Look, I mean, it's not a very big expenditure. Let's try it virtually. If it doesn't work, then we'll make the change afterwards. Let's go with staff's recommendation.
Question call on us? You want to go with it? Okay. Questions called? Just one second, just one second, hold on. Counselor Bernard?
I'm just wondering, just so I understand this correctly. So the $3,400 was for, was for
Virtual presentation.
Virtual only, right? So, yeah, so there's an added cost to bringing them here, so. And this was the best proposal, even though it was virtual? What?
Your comments?
Yes, Counselor.
You guys reviewed all the tender documents. This was the best proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mary Yankoff?
So I guess then, maybe the next time I'm listening to the meeting and you give the option that it can be virtually or not, maybe it should be clear, because I heard it. And I think Counselor McCabe said it was an option. So if it's not an option, then don't say it's an option in the meeting. I mean, I'll support this, but you did say in that meeting it was an option. Am I correct?
Who said it was an option? Counselor McCabe?
No, it was in the report. It was in the, in the Yeah.
And it was, you were there? Yeah.
I don't remember that. I don't recall that. All I know is that today's virtual, virtual use of Zoom and Google Meet. What's that? It was in their proposal, they could do it in person.
But, yeah, but we were recommending virtual.
Okay, so we recommended virtual. That's what we did. And that was voted on by the committee or acknowledged by the committee? It's acknowledged by the committee. Well, I was at the meeting, so was Sue.
Not voted on, accepting the proposal for this company.
Okay. Questions on the floor? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay. Okay, well, thank you, Counselor MacLair. Wait now, just once, I'm looking at my agenda. I now have to go into a closed session. Just one second, Counselor Twill? Okay, Counselor Twill, what's that? Yeah, no, new business wasn't accepted. We just, no, we're going into council. Okay. In council, because we voted on the agenda. In order to move into a closed session, okay, I have to refer to Section 119, subsection 1D, as per the Municipal Government Act. And D is, 1D is a human resource matters, human resource matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations. So I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Ramsey. Hopefully not too long. Second by Counselor McKennan. Okay. All those, just one sec, just don't move yet, Counselor Bernard. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going into a closed session. Yeah, I think